Good morning, everyone. We're just getting ready here to start our special meeting of council here on Tuesday, April 1st of 2025. Just as a way of explanation, just there might be a little bit of confusion on this. This special meeting is specifically for bylaws with relation to the Beacon Data Center. We do not know how long this meeting is going to take. It could take a half hour. It could take seven hours. No, I'm just kidding. But we're not sure. So what we've done is we budgeted basically an hour for this meeting as like a just in case. Under legislation, you can start a meeting late, but you can't start a meeting early. So if you are here for the agenda for the Governance and Priorities meeting, which starts, that starts at 10 o'clock. So this one is in relation to the Beacon Data Center. This meeting will go from now until it is complete. And then should we finish early? So let's say this meeting takes about a half hour. We finish early. We will take a half hour break and then proceed to our gap meeting then at 10 o'clock. So just so everybody's clear, what meetings are happening, what's going on, those sorts of things. So with that, in the spirit of respect, reciprocity, and truth, we honor and acknowledge Moquetes and the traditional Treaty VII territory and oral practices of the Blackfoot Confederacy, Sixica, Kainai, Pecani, Leekald, Nakota Nations, Chinaki, Berespa, Good Stoney, and Sutina Nation. We acknowledge that this territory is home to the Métis government of the Métis Nation with Alberta District 4. Finally, we acknowledge all nations, indigenous and non, who live, work, and play on this land, and who honor and celebrate this territory. This sacred gathering place provides us with an opportunity to engage in and demonstrate leadership on reconciliation, and we are honored to have you join us on Treaty VII territory. Moving to our approval of the special meeting agenda, can I have a counselor make the motion for the special meeting, please? I think you just have to turn them on. Okay. So we have the most up there because our screens here are not working. We're going to put the motions up. So our screens in front of us are not working. Are we able to put the, yeah, none of our left side or our screens are working. There we go. Can I have a counselor make the following motion up on the screen, please? Counselor Randala?
Thank you, Your Worship. Good morning, everyone. I move that the council approved the April 1st, 2025 special meeting of council agenda as presented.
Comments, questions? Call for the vote. And that's carried. Thank you. Just so people are aware, Counselor Wozniowski and Counselor Schindler send their regent. Counselor Wozniowski is out with the country. We're a little jealous. And Counselor Schindler is just not feeling well today. So with that, we'll move to the public hearing. So this is for bylaw 014-25 being the data center, the land use bylaw. And so with that, I believe we will hear from administration first.
Good morning. All my comments today are through the merit to all of council. I'm here to present the Beacon Data Center for public hearing. And then we are based on the feedback we've received so far, here to recommend second and third reading as well. The city has received a land use amendment application seeking redesignation of approximately 310 acres from urban transition to business park light industrial. Within the report, there are some figures that show where the location is. So on the one on the screen where the star is, it's two quarter sections approximately. And if we go to the next page, we will also see the more precise location. In preparation for the public hearing, council passed first reading of the bylaw on March 11th, and they approved scheduling of the public hearing today. The proposed changes have been circulated to internal departments. All correspondence received by administration cited no concerns. External circulation was not undertaken as the redesignation is in alignment with the municipal development plan. In support of the application, the applicant held their own public engagement session on March 18th at the Lakeside Golf Course. Attachment A provides a letter of a succinct summary of public engagement undertaken by StanTech, the consultant working for Beacon Data Centers. Attachment B provides a comprehensive engagement summary that was also prepared by StanTech. Furthermore, the land use bylaw amendment was advertised in accordance with the digital advertising bylaw. And so it was on our website from March 11th until today. Hard copy notices were mailed to adjacent landowners, nine in total within the city. And we also sent a notice to Rocky View County to capture residents on the outside of the city of Chestamere's boundary. It is worth noting that the Rocky View County's administration did reach out to our planning group to inquire as to why our typical 30-day circulation was not followed.
Sorry, Liz, I think I need to interrupt for one second. We did the meeting, we did the motion to start the meeting. We did not do the motion to open the public hearing. So sorry, Let Services, I'm just catching that now. I'm just flipping to just our procedural bylaw. Sorry about that, Liz. So can I have the motion to open the public hearing, please? Sorry, Liz. You get to do all that again. Okay. Can I have a counselor make the motion to open the public hearing, please? Counselor Grant?
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. I move that council open the public hearing for bylaw 014-25 at 9:08 a.m.
Great. Thank you. For those wanting to participate in the public hearing, whether speaking for or against, there is a form that is up here at the front that you would need to sign in on. We also have some written submissions. And also, please just remember that our public hearing is being recorded and livestreamed. And so with that now, I'll move to the staff report from administration. Sorry. Oh, sorry. Call for the vote. Great. Thank you. Now we vote in the public hearing. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Appreciate that.
Good morning.
It's a rough morning.
Through the merits.
At least we have two meetings today, so we can like get it all right on the second one. This is like a practice. It's like the warm-up skate.
Would you like me to restart the presentation from the top? I don't have notes, so it's not going to come out the same way twice, but I can.
Uh, yes.
Excellent. I am here today to present the Beacon Data Center Land Use Bylaw Amendment, currently public hearing. And based on feedback we've received so far, we are recommending second and third reading today. That said, depending on what the public says, we might have additional comments before the meeting concludes. The application, if we scroll up in the report now to the first map, is located in approximately 310 acres of land that is currently urban transition and is looking to be amended to become business park light industrial. If we go down, you will see the general location on this map. And if we go to the next page, you'll see a more precise location of where this amendment is. In preparation for today, council did pass first reading of bylaw 014-25 on March 11th and approved scheduling of the public hearing for today. The proposed changes have been circulated to internal departments. All correspondence received by administration cited no concerns. External circulation has not been undertaken in our typical manner, which is in advance of the process. And that is because this is in alignment with the municipal development plan, which is approved statutory document and would have been circulated at that time. In support of the application, the applicant Beacon Data Center held their own public engagement session on March 18th at Lakeside Golf Course. Attachment A provides a letter of a succinct summary of the public engagement. And attachment B provides a much more comprehensive overview of the engagement. Furthermore, the proposed land use bylaw amendment was advertised in accordance with the city's digital advertising bylaw. The online notice went up on March 11th and has been up until today. Hard copy notices were sent to approximately, well, actually, definitely nine adjacent landowners within the city of Chestamere's boundaries. And other notices were sent specifically to Rocky View County to capture residents outside of Chestamere's boundary. It is worth noting that Rocky View County did reach out to our administration to question why we didn't do our standard 30-day circulation. And we reiterated what I've already said, which is that we did not circulate because it is in complete compliance with the municipal development plan. And we are not offside in that decision. We fall within the requirements that exist for circulation. So administration has no concerns over that and continue to recommend proceeding. As of 4:30 on March 26th, one submission was received from a member of the public. And I believe that was provided to council. I will ask, I think actually, Your Worship will ask prior to finishing this if there was any additional ones. We also did receive a verbal comment via phone call from an adjacent landowner that raised concerns about the level of engagement that would be conducted for an area structure plan versus what would be conducted for a comprehensive development permit. Administration does note that as a subdivision application, once it's deemed complete, adjacent landowners will be notified as the subject site is not contained within an area structure plan or conceptual scheme. So there will be notifications at the subdivision stage. And the comprehensive development permit will typically be circulated for anything that's discretionary or of variance. Given the nature of this, administration may choose to do additional circulation, but that's not something we would commit to at this point in time. And I've also heard that this morning, there was a question about environmental site assessments on this land. And I wanted to make it known that that'd be a requirement at the comprehensive development permit stage, that administration would require the proper professional documents prepared and submitted to be reviewed as part of their comprehensive development permit. So ultimately, I can read through the implications section on what the exact amendments are if council would wish. They have not changed since first reading. So it is the identical content. And at this point in time, administration supports seeing this significant project for the city of Chestamere proceed?
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, councillors, mayor, and all associated staff at the city of Chestamere, and indeed, everyone who's come to attend today. So I'm going to be as succinct and concise as possible with this presentation. I'm going to address a number of points under four headings, namely power, noise, traffic, and lighting. And if there is any further questions in addition to that, I'm happy to address them as part of this presentation. So I'm going to start with power. So in terms of our process for interconnection to the grid, we're working through that process with relevant stakeholders at the ISO and with Alterlink. So that process is a multi-stage process whereby we undertake detailed load studies, load impact studies, and all that work is undertaken to achieve the ultimate aims and goals and objectives of the ISO for a safe, reliable, resilient, and affordable grid for all Albertans, both residential and business customers. We're working through that process currently, and it's very detailed and involved. Um, we're working through that process currently and it's a very detailed and involved process. And, um, and those studies are, are ongoing. Um, we commenced that process a number of, uh, months ago. And, um, and we continue to work through with those stakeholders. Um, that whole process probably takes between nine and twelve months. And, um, and we're very optimistic in the conversations that we've had that we've selected a very good location here in the city of Chestermere, which can accommodate a project like this. Um, and also not compromise the integrity and reliability of the, the grid, which is obviously paramount for us as a company. And for indeed every stakeholder involved in this project, be that the city of Chestermere, be that ISO, um, and, and all associated, um, stakeholders, as I say, um, that is of paramount importance to us. Um, so that process, as I said, is, is ongoing and will continue to develop. In terms of load studies, there'll be, um, different suggestions, different feedback we'll get as a result of going through those studies, which we'll have to, um, incorporate into our plans, into our designs, into our, into our engineering, um, presentations and in our engineering reports, which we'll be completing as part of the development permit. Um, but that's a, a brief summary of the, of the, the process associated with connecting this project to the Alberta, um, grid. Um, in terms of noise, um, so as a company, um, noise is obviously something that's inherent in every project we undertake and every mitigating measure will be undertaken to reduce, um, any impact of noise, um, on the environment. Um, technology is improving all the time in terms of noise mitigation measures. And, uh, and we will be adopting best in class technology to ensure that all noise emissions are mitigated as, as far as practicable. Uh, and, and also are compliant with rule zero one two and also any other, um, planning conditions that are issued as a result of the development pyramid. Um, the third point to, I'm going to just go through is traffic. Um, so in terms of, um, traffic management plans, et cetera, there'll be a very comprehensive and well thought through traffic man, management plan submitted as part of the development pyramid application. And this will ensure minimal impact on both local residents and local businesses in terms of both the construction aspects of the project and also the, the day-to-day operation of the project. Um, in terms of, um, day-to-day traffic on the operational side, very different to a warehouse type development or a logistics type development. And that there's minimal traffic movements on a daily basis in comparison to, uh, a project like, like an industrial warehouse, et cetera, which has, has multiple comings and goings, um, every, every hour. Um, so in terms of the, the next stage in the development, uh, permitting, we also, uh, are very keen to ensure that all necessary upgrades to the road network are supported by Beacon as the developer. And we want to engage at a very early process and ensuring that we can come up with a plan and a strategy that minimizes any of the impact on traffic, but also provides necessary improvements and upgrades in infrastructure, which will be of benefit to the development site and also the surrounding area. Um, also as part of that, we'd, uh, our intention is to engage in a very meaningful, um, liaison process with all the local residents who would have an impact by virtue of the traffic, uh, which will be generated as a result of the construction and the operational, um, operations of the, of the data center and, um, address their concerns and seek to, um, address any points where we can improve on our plan, which facilitates better, um, and more efficient traffic operations and, and management within the area. The fourth point is lighting and, um, in terms of our commitments on, on lighting, um, fully committing to, um, subscribe to the dark sky policy. And all lighting on the facility will also be in line with any recommendations as per the development pyramid to keep any light pollution to an absolute minimum. Um, so that kind of concludes kind of the, the four points I wanted to kind of briefly run through. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to address them here now.
Great, thank you. Uh, councillor, any questions for our presenter? Uh, Deputy Mayor Sambo.
Thank you, your worship, uh, through you, through administration and to our presenter. Thank you again for coming back and for the information. Um, I, I know the answer to this, but I, I was just wondering, these four points that you brought up, um, is that because that's what you were hearing from people in the community? These were some of the concerns that they had and you wanted to address that?
Yeah, absolutely. And also a combination of these are factors that we come across, um, with, with all our developments. And we make a point to addressing these and getting in front of those issues as, as far as possible. And to, um, develop and mitigate measures to address all these points. And, um, we're all always very keen to kind of collaborate with any ideas people have. Like everything is fairly localized in terms of local impacts or potential impacts. And we're very keen to engage locally and take on board suggestions as to how we can do our job better and how we can minimize any, any impacts as a, as a result of the development.
Wonderful. Thank you. I just wanted to highlight that because I know I've been very impressed with your willingness to communicate with community members and take that feedback and be a, a really integrated part of the community. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Uh, councillor Grant. Thank you, Mayor. Through the Chair to Administration, our presenter. I'm very excited about the project. I think it's a great, uh, a great project. So, uh, assuming that everything goes well with the second and third meeting, how long would it be till you have shovels in the ground?
So our, our construction timeline, I suppose, is dictated to a large extent by the, the ISO process and when we can get, um, certainty of the connection. Um, but based on our conversations today and, um, kind of the very kind of willingness of the ISO and Alterlink and other stakeholders to engage and support these projects. Um, I'd hope that's a, a fairly short timeframe and we can be up and running with the construction ASAP. Um, we've been engaging with, uh, local construction companies here in Alberta, um, on pre-construction to get ahead and to, to, to make progress with respect to all that. So when we have certainty coming through on the power availability and the connections, that we've got all that work and collateral in the bank and we can, um, we can hit the ground running.
Perfect, thank you.
Councillor Ryan.
Thank you, through worship, through administration and to the presenter. Again, a very good presentation indeed. And, uh, you know, I was at the, uh, public consultation and I thought I was done quite well. Uh, with respect to, um, other economic spinoffs, um, what do you see as some other kind of economic development happening around, uh, the, the data processing plant?
Um, I suppose in terms of economic spinoff, the, the kind of a clear economic spinoff, I suppose it's very direct and tangible as the supply chain opportunities for local businesses. There was a number of those businesses who attended the opening evening and, uh, we got their details and we've reached out to them and, and gave them our details and asked them to become part of the kind of the supply chain opportunity group as the project develops. So there was actually a quite a broad dichotomy of, 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 uh, companies who attended and who expressed interest from very, very large companies within the province, um, who were household names to much, much smaller companies with just a handful of employees. Um, and like I presented my details to those and, and the details of the company to engage, to get in touch and to, and to actively reach out and become part of the project. So those opportunities for like your electrical engineering companies, your plumbing, your heating, your ventilation, uh, security, roofing, um, groundwork, civil engineering, um, gas supply, kind of embraced a wide variety of, of opportunities and a wide variety of, of, of providers. Um, I suppose in, in extension to that, there's also kind of the hub effect of having a, a, a project like this providing compute at a local level and providing compute to the, kind of the greater Calgary, that not just the city of Chestermere, but the greater Calgary and the greater Alberta area. Having compute locally and domestically embedded within the region will provide opportunities for um, software development, for IT, for tech. Um, AI is obviously becoming a, a vital tool in, in various industries, whether that's healthcare, manufacturing, robotics, um, oil and gas, energy. So having that locally to draw down on, I think will be a great benefit and, um, and, and bolster their efforts as they move forward and, and embed AI into their own processes and, and businesses.
Thank you. Uh, if nobody else, I have a couple. Uh, one, I just want to echo some comments that were, uh, said so far here by council. Um, absolutely. I appreciate, uh, how the four points, uh, that you touched on in your presentation. I agree. That's absolutely what we heard, uh, from the public at that public engagement, uh, session. Uh, I would say that those are the four questions that came to me, uh, and I kept finding, tracking you down or other people of your team, uh, to get those questions answered. And I thought, uh, the information that was provided to everybody at that time and then today. So, um, I just want to say thank you for listening to our community. Uh, and thank you for listening to those concerns that they brought out there, uh, and that your presentation focused specifically uh, on the questions that came from our community. Um, in that vein, there's been a couple that have, uh, come across my desk, so to speak. Uh, one, can you just talk a little bit about what the dark sky policy? Can you just talk a little bit about like what that tangibly means?
I suppose what it tangibly means is, I suppose we're in a pretty fortunate position in that we're, we're not mandated to have huge lighting and huge infrastructure in terms of like compare, in comparison to say airports and like aviation and, and others. So we can, um, we can keep these quite discreet. And, um, and if you visit any other data center campus, you won't see a huge amount of lights, um, lit up after, after dark hours. So we're here to be guided by kind of council conditions on the development pyramid. And the extent of those is kind of like for, I suppose, for the, the planning department to kind of decide and, and what, what they want us to do. We'll collaborate, we'll work around, we're not mandated, as I said, by, by, from a technological perspective, to have huge lighting um, in place. So we can keep this very discreet. And, um, I think, um, in terms of like the, the lighting impact, we can keep that very, very subdued.
Great, thank you. Another exciting part of this project has to do with, uh, the employment opportunities that are coming. Uh, and some questions that, uh, residents are asking, uh, is, um, just looking at, uh, is there, and I know that you've talked about this, uh, with our administration. It's been talked about with our council, uh, at the public hearings. Sorry, at the public engagement sessions, things like that. I was wondering if you can mention just at the public hearing, uh, just the, uh, conversations that have been had about, uh, wanting to hire people, uh, from Chestermere. This creates, uh, opportunities for people who live within Chestermere to be able to, uh, work at, uh, at this location.
Yeah, well, I suppose starting off kind of with the, like the construction element. So the construction element will like be presenting up to fifteen hundred jobs. And those fifteen hundred jobs will play out over a number of years. Um, so in terms of like opportunities for local people to get involved in those, they're, they're very, very significant. Whether that's through direct employment with one of the, the main contractors in the project or through a supply chain opportunity for local companies. Um, we as a company are happy to mandate our contractor to, um, to open up these opportunities to local city of Chestermere companies and to give them an opportunity to tender and to, to be part of this process and be part of this opportunity. Um, we want to be good community participants and to, and to really kind of give the economy locally, the stimulus that it deserves from having a project like this in their area. Seeing tangible evidence in kind of the Greater Dublin area of companies who have got involved in this and been able to increase their turnover four, five, sixfold over a very, uh, like relatively short period of time. So I think the opportunities will be there. We'll roll out those invitations to tender and kind of following on from conversations I had with various parties at the, at the open house, um, a number of weeks ago. Uh, we want them to be involved. We want them to come forward, but there's only so much as well that we can do as a company. We need people to engage and be active and to have the ambition and kind of that to run with the opportunities, which I have no doubt they will. Um, and then like, I suppose the second element on the, on the job side then is the operational jobs. Again, those jobs will be split between supply chain and direct. And, um, and this will be a, a brand new facility and a lot of these jobs, um, like having local employment, uh, embedded within the, in, in the area to support this is, is vital. Um, like just from a continuity perspective for ourselves, they're less likely to leave and to, to, to really like establish long-term careers in the, in the digital infrastructure world. So, um, I think there'll be, there'll be huge opportunities coming down the track and, and, and we want to embrace the local, um, offering. This is a rapidly growing part of Canada. And the rapidly growing population will provide, I think, I have no doubt, the expertise and the ambition and, and the skill sets to, to, to really harness this opportunity. And also from what I heard at the, at the open evening, multiple people came and asked about like, could they become part of the kind of the digital infrastructure industry and kind of increase their own skill sets and their own training to, to kind of meet those needs and, um, again, something that's very, very achievable.
Great, thank you. And, um, you made a statement in there that I fully agree with. You said that we want to be good community partners. And I would suggest that you've demonstrated that right from the first day, uh, that you showed up, uh, communicating with our organization, with the city. Uh, that good community partners piece, I think, has, uh, shown through in everything that you've been, uh, working on so far. And, and so I want to thank you and highlight that statement. Uh, because I think, uh, that's, that's not just a throwaway statement with your organization. Uh, that, uh, good community partners, I think, is something that we've seen demonstrated, uh, in the way you've communicated with our staff, the way you're working with our administration, the way you've worked with our council, the way you've worked with our community so far. Uh, and I, uh, have no doubt that that's going to continue. Uh, final question on the employment side. Uh, you mentioned that at the public, uh, engagement session that you had people that were coming up to you about other opportunities to partner.
Yeah.
Would you encourage people to still continue to do that? And, and how would they go about reaching out if they, uh, had an interest in, um, in, in that conversation?
Absolutely. Um, well, I mean, first and foremost, they can contact me on, on my details. I think they're probably widely shared on, on, on some of the, on some of the collateral that's, that's on, on the public domain. Uh, but we're happy to share an email with the city of Chestermere. And you can use that, that email to funnel all inquiries through and we'll respond to those in due courses as we move through the program, that process of, of bringing our project to kind of fruition.
Yeah. So I would say depending on how the next ten minutes or so go, uh, if you're willing to share what that good contact would be for that to share with our, uh, communications team. So then when we put out, uh, communications with regards to our meeting today, I think that that would be a good, uh, piece to add, uh, within that.
Yeah, just to reiterate, kind of the, the, like, the, the interest from companies attending the open evening were like from the very largest in this province to the, 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 the very smallest startups, which are, are, are starting their journey in the world of business and, and enterprise. So very refreshing to see a kind of that broad, broad swathe of, of kind of, of people wanting to get involved.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, uh, within that, uh, that people don't feel like they missed out, so to speak, right? By not attending, say, the public engagement session, then all of a sudden, oh, I wish I would have. They hear this, like, oh, if I would have been there, I could have reached out. That's why I think, uh, us demonstrating that that conversation could continue would be, uh, very good. Awesome. Uh, any final questions from, uh, council for our presenter? Great, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Uh, we'll now call on, uh, any group, uh, sorry. I just got to get to the right spot here. Apologize. We'd like now to call on anyone who would like to speak in support of, uh, this proposal. So any member, uh, from the gallery who would like to speak in support of this proposal, calling for first time. Calling a second time for anyone who would like to speak in support of this application. And calling a third time for anyone who would like to speak in support of, uh, this presentation. For those of you looking at me going, why does he keep doing this? No one's coming. I have to. It's the rules. You have to call three times. Uh, looking to, uh, legislative services, uh, do we have any submissions, uh, speaking, uh, in favor?
Uh, through the chair, uh, we only have the one submission that was provided to council and, uh, in the sign-in sheet, no one has signed up yet.
Great, thank you. Uh, with that, uh, then we'll move to present, uh, any, uh, members from the public who would like to speak in opposition of the application. So calling, uh, for a first time for anyone who would like to speak in opposition. And calling for a second time for anyone who would like to speak in opposition. And calling a third time for anyone who would like to speak in opposition. Great. Uh, so normally at this point, we would go back to a rebuttal, a presentation from the applicant. Uh, however, uh, those responses are limited to information, uh, received at the public hearing. I think that we've covered all of those things and I don't think that there's a rebuttal piece within that. Uh, going back, uh, to our administration, administration, is there anything further that you would like to share, Ms. Armitage?
I do have one quick comment I would like to make before this is closed. Um, when Joseph was speaking, he men- When Joseph was speaking, he mentioned the next critical piece for their timeline to construction is their ISO approval. And while that is absolutely true, I do want to make sure that our community members know that the next critical step for the city is the comprehensive development permit. And so what that will include is an application that will be submitted, we do not have that yet. And I believe it will be with Beacon Data Centers and their representatives at Stantec. And through that process, we will require the necessary professional studies be completed to help prepare the design of the site. So these will include, but will, are not limited to off-site servicing, onsite servicing, so water, sanitary, traffic studies, light, noise, environmental studies, so all of those pieces will come into administration next as part of a package from Beacon and Stantec. And we'll work on that approved site design and we'll work through a process on that. So that, that is kind of our next steps as the city, that I just wanted to make sure that the community hears that process. And Beacon will be doing both processes in tandem to get all of their approvals from all of the different agencies in place. The ISO one, we don't have anything to do with.
Great, thank you. Are there any final questions from council either for the applicant or for administration? Great, with that, I'd like to call for a motion to close the public hearing, please. Can I have a council read the following motion, please? Deputy Mayor Sambo?
Thank you, your worship. I move that council close the public hearing for bylaw zero one four dash two five at nine thirty seven AM.
Great, thank you. Call for the vote. And that's carried unanimously, thank you. With that, I believe administration, we have two motions then that are upcoming, this would be for second and third reading, is that correct? The first motion is on the screen in front of us, can I have a councillor, councillor Ryan?
Thank you, mayor. I move that council give second reading to bylaw zero one four dash twenty five being amendment to the land use bylaws number zero two four dash twenty four as amended as shown on schedule A of bylaw number zero one four dash twenty five.
Great, thank you. Any comments, questions from council? Deputy Mayor Sambo?
Thank you, your worship, and just a comment, and you might also want to comment on this as well. I think whenever we are considering a land use change, it's important to do a lot of due diligence and ask a lot of questions. So just for a little bit of context, I, myself and council, we've talked to ministers, we've talked to peers, we've talked to administration, we've talked to members of the public, we've looked for all of the ways that something like this could go wrong and considered many of those scenarios. I can say for myself, everybody I've interacted with over the last several weeks, I've asked them, what do you think of this project? And I've heard these things, power, noise, traffic and lighting, but other than that, the community seems on board with it, they seem excited about the opportunity. So I'm pleased with the due diligence that has been done and pleased with the work that administration has been done and I think this is a good opportunity.
Great, thank you. Any other comments, questions from council with regards to the motion? Great, thank you. We'll call for the vote. And that's carried unanimously, thank you. And then I believe we have one final motion. Can I have a councillor make the final motion for this, please? Councillor Randawa?
Thank you, your worship. And I move that the council give the third, third and final reading to bylaw number zero fourteen dash twenty five being amendment to the land use bylaw number zero two zero dash twenty four as amended as shown on schedule A to bylaw number zero one four two five.
Great, thank you. Comments, questions from council? Great, thank you, and we'll call for the vote. And that's carried unanimously, thank you so much. We, with that, I believe we've come to all the items for our special meeting of council. Thank you to our applicant and to administration and exciting project moving forward. And with that, I'll call for a motion to adjourn the meeting, please. Councillor Grant?
Thank you, mayor, I move that council adjourn the special meeting of council at nine forty one AM.
Great, thank you, we'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. So we'll do a break and then-
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our Governance and Priorities meeting for Tuesday, April the first. Starting with our land acknowledgement, in the spirit of respect, reciprocity, and truth, we honor and acknowledge the Moquetes and the traditional Treaty VII territory and oral practices of the Blackfoot Confederacy, Sixica, Kynai, Pecanay, Leacon, Nakona Nations, Chiniqui, Bears Paw, Good Stony, and Sutino Nation. We acknowledge that this territory is home to the Métis government of the Métis Nation with Alberta District four. And finally, we acknowledge all nations, indigenous and non, who live, work, and play on this land and who honor and celebrate this territory. This sacred gathering place provides us with an opportunity to engage in and demonstrate leadership on reconciliation, and we are honored to have you join us on Treaty VII territory. We'd like to call for the approval of the agenda, please. Our screens just went back down. At least mine did. Everybody else is down? Everybody's good? Okay. So the motion is up on the screen in front of us here. So we are going to be adding one in-camera item, and this is actually going to be the first item that we are going to deal with. Council just needs to have a brief in-camera session for an advice from officials, and then we'll be doing that first. So that will be coming before item number four, which is outlined on the agenda above. What council will do is council will go into the boardroom so that we don't make all of you get up and leave and go out and come back. I feel like that would be a very unpopular decision, so we'll go that way, and then we'll come back in after. So with that, can I have a counselor make the motion for the agenda, please? Counselor Grant.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that council approve the April first, 2025 Governance Priority Committee meeting agenda with the following amendments. Add Agenda Item 9.1, Council Obligations, FOIP Section 24, Advice from Officials, and move Agenda Item 9.1 to before Agenda Item four.
Great, thank you. Any comments, questions from council? Deputy Mayor Sambo.
Thank you, your worship, and I heard you talking about this, but I noticed that 5.1 is a social well-being framework study, and I think a majority of the people in this room are probably here for 5.2. Is there any possibility we could move that ahead so folks could leave afterwards if they were ready?
Yeah, while that's been discussed, we also have a presenter here for item 5.1, and that presenter is on a tight timeline, and so we are not able to flip the two. Any other comments, questions with regards to the meeting? Sorry, to the agenda, thank you. With that, call for the vote. And that's carried, thank you. Keeping in the spirit of some of the things we've been doing with Moment of Reflection, we had a big weekend at the U-11 World over at the rec center with our CMHA program, and that is all of our U-11 teams won gold at the tournament this week. So, yeah. So our U-11 One, our U-13 White, our U-12, and our U-11 Blue team all won gold. And so council will be doing what we've been doing as congratulatory matters with success that's happening in our program, and we have cards that council will be signing and sending to all of those teams. And so this is something new that council's been really focused on, and that's celebrating success in our community, whether that be from our hockey programs. And so to our public again, if you are working with a program or a not-for-profit or an organization that is finding some success in your programs, please, first of all, invite us out. We'd love to come and attend and watch and participate in. But secondly, we would love to celebrate it here at council and acknowledge it with cards and things like that. Also, unfortunately, Counselor Schindler was unable to be here this morning. He's just not feeling well, but he wanted something that he wanted to share at our meeting, and so I'm going to share this on behalf of Counselor Schindler this morning. April is Autism Awareness Month, and I wanted to take a moment to celebrate the autistic members of our community. Autism is more than a disability. One of the things I love about the autistic people in my life is how deeply they feel things, which drives them to notice things unseen by others, critique unique things, and seek a more just world. I love the way they question norms and challenge us to be forthright in our communication. I love the passion that drives them to advance both their own knowledge and skills and our society as a whole. I am lucky to have the autistic people I do in my life, and I know many others feel the same. I hope everyone takes this month to learn about autism from the experience of autistic people, and that as a society, we continue to make strides in recognizing them as a normal part of the depth and breadth of the human experience. So Counselor Schindler, again, just wanted to share that as part of our Moment of Reflection. So thank you to Counselor Schindler, who, again, unfortunately was not able to join us here this morning just from not feeling well. With that, I believe that we're going to have a motion to move to in-camera. Can I have the motion on the screen, please? Thank you. Can I have a counselor make the following motion, please? Counselor Randawa.
Thank you, your worship. I move that the Governance and Priority Committee move into closed session at 10:08 a.m. to discuss the following. Council Obligation, FOIP Section 24, Advice from Officials.
Great, thank you. Call for the vote. And that's carried. Thank you. So we're going to go in- Good morning, everyone. We're just coming back from our quick in-camera session there. Can I have a counselor make the following motion, please? Counselor Randawa.
Thank you, Your Worship. I move that the Governance and Priority Committee moved out of closed session at 10:18 a.m.
Great, thank you. Call for the vote. Great, and that's carried. Counselor Schindler, I believe that you are joining us now online. Is that correct? Counselor Schindler, we need you to unmute just to confirm that you are online. Okay, IT will give you guys a minute to get that sorted. Okay, with that, we'll move to our first, we have a public input session. Looking to large services, have we had anyone sign up on the public input session?
Through the chair, yes, we do. We have one public member.
Great, thank you. Good morning. So we'll just have you introduce yourself and then... There you go, yeah. Perfect.
Morning, everyone. My name is Sukdeep Deliwal, here to present. My name is Sukdeep Deliwal, and I'm a resident of the East Acreages area. I would like to thank the CEO, Mr. Edney, for making the time to meet with us in discussions for the below matter that I would like to put on record following comments from the public. I got three issues to comment on. First one, I would like to bring to your attention that there are existing policies and tools at disposal of the council and the CEO to put into clarity the off-site levies. I will refer to them as OSL. I would like to point out that the following documents for your reference. There's an Offsite Levy Bylaw 00924 approved April 2024, and there was an Offsite Levy Policy Number 320 approved in April 2024 as well. So that's about over a year that these things have been in place. In these documents, it is very clear that the intent of the off-site levies and triggers for such levies in the point where development occurs and the development areas are connected to the city services, off-site levy policy defines scenarios where the off-site levies are exempt. So the intent of the off-site levies is there's eight points that they're support: transportation, sewer, water, and so on, so. The intent is that those levies only trigger once the developed lands are connected to the city services, right? In our case, we're in the East Acreages TRR zones, so we believe that TRR zoning should be exempt from the off-site levies. And there's also, in the roles of the chief administrator, there's also lenience or direction to use their discretion to have these off-site levies redefined into clarity where they do not apply into TRR one-acre zoning scenarios. I would also want to point out to the council that we've been misled by the staff as well over years, that these things did exist in rules, whereas when we went and talked to the staff, we were misled saying they have to do bylaw changes, they have to do certain things before they can help us out. So we were misled, we did some research, members of the public also did some research. We were busy last two weeks, actually since the last meeting. Even in the last meeting, I believe the council and the public was lied to about these rules, which we found out since that they do exist in paper. So I want to make sure that the staff is directed to be up and up on the policies and the rules that are in place before they direct public into misdirections. The other part is the second point I talked about in the last governance meeting was that our taxes have gone up. We've received no additional services since we were annexed from Rockyview County. I'm wondering if the council can help us roll the roll right back to the same as what Rockyview had. We had a 10-year agreement that's passed now. Hopefully, you guys can help us there. And the final topic I want to discuss is garbage and recycling. If there's any movement on that for us to be added to that. That's it for me.
Great, thank you. So I'll address points three and four just briefly. There was a motion that was made. It was actually Counsel Grant, who made the motion at our last council meeting with regards to the tax rate for acreages, whereas we're moving into the final budget approval for 2025. Council directed administration, and I apologize, I may not get the wording exactly correct here as I'm flying off the top of my head here. But there was a motion that was made from Counsel Grant to do a review, to see how, to create basically a bracket that would be for the acreages. So administration is working on that. That'll be part of our budget review that is coming back. So the answer to your question is that, on that one, is that that is coming back as part of the 2025 budgeting process. Within that motion, we also made it clear that, so our budget deliberations will be done as workshops, and then our actual budget presentations will of course be public. And so at that time, the results of how that looks will be done within the public, and we made sure that that was in the motion so that it will be clear what's happening with that. So that's, so on the taxation side, that's coming as part of that. On your point number four, I don't know if administration has another update at our last council meeting. They provided an update to council that strategy is being worked on for garbage collection in all of our acreage areas, and a route is being developed. I don't have an update right now as to where that sits. I would look to our CAO. That would now be an administrative issue.
Yeah, good morning, Mayor and Council. So thank you through yourself to Mr. Deliwal. Yes, we're working on, we're working on the garbage. We're going to get some notification out to the residents of what that looks like, how to sign up, where bins will have to go, just again, making sure we've got proper routes that we can turn around the garbage trucks, we're not having to back in and out on the main roads and that kind of thing. So Mr. Fluker and his team is working actively on that. Just to add to the mayor's comment, the direction was to look at making a subclass for the acreage properties so we can make as many residential subclasses in our tax bylaw that we'd like to. So that's what we're working on for budget time. We'll have a recommendation to council for that based on our discussions we've had. And to your very first point, I will apologize on behalf of administration for some of these rules being overlooked or maybe miscommunicated through the years. So that's something, as I promised yourself and Mr. Delire, that we'll work on here going forward to ensure that we're following our bylaws and following our policies for you.
Well, thank you very much for giving it the urgency needed. I've grown some white hair since, but thank you.
Yeah, no, and I would just say, and I've said this several times, right? We saw a very high turnover in our staff in the last few years. And in any organization, when you have the high percentage of turnover that this organization had, I believe we were having this conversation yesterday, and it was somewhere between 60% to 70% staff turnover in the last two years. I don't care what organization you are, when you have that high a turnover, that can, it just leads to having to figure things out. However, our community has an expectation of level of service from the city. And I am, I have full confidence in our CAO and the work that he is doing with our administrative team to provide an ongoing high-level service to our community. We fully acknowledge where we came from. We fully acknowledge that we had a high turnover in staff and that that does create tensions within any organization. What I will say is that this council fully stands behind our CAO and believe in the work that he is doing that has come out in our reviews of him at the three-month review time and every counselor's comment that was involved with that. And we fully believe in the work that he's doing to improve on those situations. And I would also say that it speaks to his character that when there's a tough public statement that's made, our CAO is willing to offer an apology immediately and suggest that we're going to do better. And I would suggest that that's council stance as well, that I believe in the leadership principle, be quick to apologize and do better. And so on those tough comments, I appreciate our CAO stepping into that gap right away and saying what he has said.
I will concur that I feel the same, that the CEO has done a great job and keep up a good job, Ken.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
And also, sorry, the final, on the off-site levies, to just keep the costs low going future, so we can get more development into Chestermere, just as low as possible.
There's a, there's a whole... That's another discussion. We've got a few coming today. What I will say is that our OSL model is under full review right now and is coming back. I want to say, I think April 8th is the first time we're opening the bylaw on the OSL. Is that correct? Am I remembering correctly?
That is correct.
Yeah, thank you. So April 8th is when we're looking at the first reading of the update to that bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. With that, except for information? Or no, I think... Yeah, okay. And that was the only one that we had for public input. Is that correct? Great, thank you. Can I have a motion? That makes sense. Great job. Thank you. Can I have a counselor make the following motion, please? Counselor Ryan.
Let's move that council accept public input regarding the OSL bylaw and tax rate for East Acreages for information.
Great, thank you. Comments, questions from council? Call for the vote. And we'll give this another attempt. Counselor Schindler, are you able to verbally vote online now?
Yeah.
And you voted in favor?
No, I just have to say it.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you. Okay, with that, we're going to move to item 5.1, which is our social well-being framework. And this is being presented by Ms. Ruby Brar, who is our manager of family and community support services.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Like Mayor Dean had mentioned, my name is Ruby Brar. I'm the manager of Community Support Services. Today, our presenter, Dr. Alina Turner from Help Seeker Technologies, is presenting the Social Wellbeing Framework Implementation. Our recommendation is that the Governance and Priorities Committee accept the presentation from Help Seeker Technologies for information. So just some subject or background, in Chestermere, the city actively functions in social well-being planning by uniting community services, civic engagement, and support networks. The city drives efforts to identify service gaps and build a social fabric that every resident can rely on. This project is a partnership between Help Seeker and the City of Chestermere to conduct robust community engagement, gather in-depth qualitative insights and analyze lived experiences related to residents' social well-being. So using this data, a social well-being framework will be crafted that outlines clear challenges, goals, and strategic actions for the next five years. So this strategic framework empowers the city to direct investments, foster community collaboration, and ultimately enhances resident quality of life. So some implications, the framework that will be available will help guide strategic planning for program and services, service outcomes, as well as delivery for the city and the social service sector. And just a risk is that some risks in administering this product include a lack of community engagement, accurate extrapolation from data collected, and looking at feasibility versus sustainability for outcomes. So I will pass it over to Dr. Turner. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I so appreciate the audience to such an important topic. And don't worry, it's only a five-hour presentation. But thank you so much, counselors and Your Worship, for this opportunity to share more about this project. I'll get you to flip to the next slide. And just two seconds about us, we're a technology and data analytics company that's based in Calgary, Canada, Bore, Alberta, all that good stuff. And we live right next door, and we're based right in Calgary and in different parts of Alberta where our team is. Our shtick is that we focus on complex social problems. So ideally, before they become problems, and Chestermere is on this track of looking at things preventatively and looking at the data early on so that we can understand where opportunities and gaps might be. So next slide, please. The whole concept of a social well-being framework, and what are they? Who are they for? Who writes them? Social well-being is nothing that one stakeholder group can own. Definitely not something that the municipality owns on its own, but it's something the municipality can plan for and convene stakeholders around. And that's really the purpose here is to carve out evidence-based path for the city to inform its strategic planning and decision-making, its advocacy efforts with provincial and federal governments as well. We're in a very tense political time. So envisioning that social well-being for Chestermere into the future is going to support you in building that resiliency earlier on before you hit potential roadblocks in your growth trajectory. So that's why they're important. Next slide, please. So advancing council direction, of course, this lines up perfectly with your priorities around effective leadership, around a varied economy. Without a really strong social well-being framework that supports that foundational work, all of these council priorities are going to be at risk potentially. So it's a way for you to strengthen a holistic approach to your planning and advance your direction. Of course, I fully understand these might shift with a lot of the dynamics at play politically as well. However, the four priorities around council's direction, I'm sure, stand true and will continue to reverberate into future years as well. So we're trying to build a foundation towards that direction. Next slide, please. So how are we approaching building this framework? The good news is, is we have some publicly available data that Help Seeker has collaborated with the city in previous years of mining, aka we don't need to redo that work. That data comes from public data sources such as the census. The census hasn't been updated since COVID, however. So we know that qualitative insights, or what residents feel and see on the day-to-day, is absolutely essential to make sure that it is informing that process moving forward. So a lot of this work is going to be qualitative. It's going to complement that data, quantitative data that we've already gathered in the past, and add that what's happening today flavor to it. And how are people feeling, and what is the sentiment out there? What are the issues that are top of mind for diverse segments of the population within Chestermere? Next slide. So how are we going to go about it? Spring is the kickoff, and today is really the beginning of the process. We have a series of what are called pop-up events. So you might see folks from the social planning department and different components of your planning and research teams go out and about at various events. So Canada Day, for instance, you might see a pop-up of folks coming up to you and saying, hey, how is life in Chestermere? What's the social well-being like? Any issues, any social problems that you're starting to see? So those pop-ups are meant to engage... So those pop-ups are meant to engage citizens in short conversations. Those conversations actually come into, uh, Help Seeker's technology backbone. So we can actually mine those qualitative insights using some of the artificial intelligence tools that we have at our disposal now to get actual insights, data insights out of what people are seeing out there. And then bring that back to you as counselors and say, here's what, here's what we heard. Here's what the gaps are. Here's what the evidence says for a city of a similar size with similar issues. Here's what some of those directions might be. Ultimately, council is, is the decision maker on this. Our job is to inform you with the evidence and bring that to you. That goal, um, of delivering this to you is September sixth, sixteen, I believe. So, uh, so we'll see you soon, right? Uh, but you'll see us in the meantime out there and, and your teams out there as well, gathering this data from various naturally occurring events. So, uh, if you know of, of something recreational event where lots of people gather, I was saying to Ruby, today would be a great pop-up. Lots of people here, lots of opinions. So the, if there are those opportunities, do, uh, let Ruby know these. We want to leverage what's already happening. We're not going to create a bunch of work for people. We're going to hang our, you know, hang our hat on something that's already underway. Um, so that is the game plan and the immediate next step, just a, a plug for, uh, for your worship. I know that you have, uh, nonprofit, um, meetings that are happening already. So that's another great opportunity. If there's a way for us to, to come in and, and engage with that group, would love that opportunity as well. And of course, if, if anybody else has these opportunities to let Ruby, uh, Ruby know, and we'll make sure we do that. Uh, but that's the, the game plan moving forward, engagement schedules and, uh, getting some of these going right aways because we've got lots of work to do and, uh, lots of people to meet. Thank you so much. And, uh, if you have any questions, happy to be here with those.
Great, thank you. Uh, open it up. Just wanted to clarify one thing. You commented on the census that is your understanding that the last census for Chestermere wasn't done since COVID?
The census, not the municipal census, the, the one that goes in depth from the federal, the federal census.
Perfect, okay.
Yeah, that one is, goes really, really in depth on, on everything from commuting and yeah. So that one is going to get done again uh, soon, but we're not going to get data from that for years still. So we have some ways of projecting out based on your municipal census what might be happening, but not as good as the actual, the real thing.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Cause just to clarify, the municipality did one in May. And we're actually going to, uh, be doing another one just because of some of the projected growth that we're seeing. So I believe we have another one coming this spring. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Your worship will be doing another one this spring and one of the leverage points for doing it again so soon is that our funding from the province is based on our population. So as our population grows this quickly, it's worthwhile to get some more money from the province.
Absolutely. Yeah. So those municipal censuses come into play. They're just not digging into, for instance, language spoken at home or um, household composition when it comes to income, for instance, or lone parents. Um, yeah, so.
If we're, if we're doing one anyway.
Yeah.
Is there a way that we can incorporate some of that data into this collection for municipality? Is that something, sorry, I guess it's, as you're looking at ways that we're partnering or ways that we are working together.
Yeah.
Is that a way that, uh, the municipality could engage, uh, working with the work that you're doing on this piece?
I would never speak on behalf of long-range planning folks in your administration. They, they work really hard on getting the methodology together. I would welcome the opportunity to connect with them, but I would defer to their expertise on that because it's, I know it's a huge undertaking to, to do that. Is there opportunity? I'm sure, but we'll, we'll leave that to the, uh, experts in-house to direct when it comes to my work, but happy to have the conversation.
Mr. Edney, are you worried? My question just created a lot of work. Is that the problem?
Yeah, through yourself to council. I'm not necessarily sure it does. I think that's what Matt and I were just talking about of if we're going through the process of doing the census, if we're asking ten questions right now, let's ask twenty. Right? I don't see that. Yes, that should take twice as long, but I don't see that being a huge financial or administrative burden, although I'm not the one who has to do it. So it's easy for me to say that. But that's definitely something we can take offline and look at. How do we incorporate a little more data into our census if there's a good use for it in the community?
Yeah, it, it could definitely set the bar. Nobody's, as far as I know, definitely not in Alberta is doing that. And, uh, that would definitely be an interesting conversation to, to for sure have.
Well, I would love that too, because that also would fit within our strategic plan, right? One of our goals in our strategic plan is to be a leader in municipal governance. And so when you say, well, no one else in Alberta is doing that, that kind of makes our ears perk up and go.
Not that I know of. Yeah, not that I know of.
Right? Because that's, that's been one of our goals, right, is, is to do that. Um, and we've seen some success with that. So, okay, great, thank you. Uh, questions from, uh, council for our presenter, Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, through worship. Uh, trying to get clarification between what you're doing and the, uh, social needs assessment.
So, uh, the social needs assessment, the previous work that I believe we were engaged on with you guys, that one was an in-depth quantitative look at what's happening. So we were inferring issues based, uh, based on statistical data from what used to be very current census data when we initially did it, but now it's a little bit stale. Um, so social needs assessments take that data and they, they try to say, well, if these, let's say concentrations of poverty are happening in these parts of the city, then we might need to bring services there, et cetera. This is really about the qualitative, uh, qualitative meaning, what are people saying? What are they experiencing in the day-to-day? You don't get that from the, from those numerical analyses. Yeah, so complement and build on it. You're welcome.
Any other questions from council? Counselor Randala?
Thank you, your worship, through you to the presenter. Thank you for the presentation. It's lovely. I have only, uh, all question is, you already put it in your presentation.
Okay.
And I know you guys can collaborate with the nonprofit and staff. Our nonprofit is very well engaged into the community. But sometime from the public, I get that the idea from the events you get, there is some of, uh, our community cannot speak other languages. What exactly you guys are doing for that to get their data as well for the community?
Excellent question, of course. And, uh, yeah, you probably saw that in, in the presentation, the cultural sensitivity and inclusion priority. So this is why these pop-ups are really important. And this is why we're working with your departments. So you might see pop-ups that are happening in cultural gatherings or at faith, uh, gatherings as well that are happening by potentially staff from the city, uh, that are members of those communities as well. So rather than having this kind of external team descending on your community, we're actually leveraging your community members to go into, into those communities and, and work that community development bottom-up perspective. They know their community best. We're training them to actually do the pop-ups in a consistent methodology. And then we're taking that data, doesn't matter what language it comes in, because the A I can speak any language. Uh, and then we're structuring that, that input to give you guys that, that feedback. So absolutely aware of it and, and it's part of the game plan of why we are doing these pop-ups and spread out in different contexts, rather than one big, large gathering that might require, um, or that's going to have a lot more barriers for access. We got to go where the people are. Thank you.
Yes, please, Ruby.
Uh, through your worship to Counselor Randala, just to build upon what Dr. Turner was saying, we're very fortunate in our department. A lot of us are multilingual. Uh, we've all been trained, uh, to facilitate the questions as well. So for example, Punjabi, uh, three or four out of our thirteen members speak it. It's a huge language, um, in our community. So we are able to have those one-on-one conversations, uh, qualitatively. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruby.
Any other questions from council with regards to the presentation? Great, thank you. Um, what I will say is on this, uh, I'm excited for work like this because, uh, we're about to have, um, conversations about other possibilities or ideas or we've seen in our community, there, there are needs that our council is trying to address through our twenty twenty-five, uh, capital budget plan, right? How, how do we get humans in and out of Chestermere, right? How, right within our capital budget plan, we've tried to address some of these things. Um, and at the same time, I think it's really important that, uh, that, uh, municipal government or governments at all level, uh, don't lose sight of taking care of the humans. Right? And taking care of the people that live in those houses, that drive in those cars, that access those roadways, that access those parks, that do all of those things. I think, uh, I think another very important part of, of the work that we do, uh, is working with our administration to making sure of how do we care for the human beings that do all of those things within our community? So, uh, I appreciate work like this. Uh, I'm a little biased because this is the background I come out of. So I have a certain bias to this. Uh, but I just think that that's important, uh, because, uh, yeah, and so I, I'm, uh, looking forward to, uh, what comes, uh, from this work. So thank you for that. Uh, with that, I believe we have a motion to accept for information. Thank you. Can I have a counselor make the following motion, please? Uh, Deputy Mayor Sambo.
Thank you, your worship, and I move that the Governance and Priorities Committee accept the presentation from Help Seeker Technologies for information.
Great, thank you. Uh, comments, questions from council? Call for the vote? Uh, Counselor Schindler?
Aye.
Thank you. And that's carried. Thank you. Uh, turning just to our C A O on that idea that was, uh, talked about before. I don't believe we need a motion within that. I think that that's something that administration can just take offline and, and explore without a motion from council, correct? Great, awesome. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Uh, with that, uh, we are going to, uh, move to item, uh, five point two, which is our Lakeside Greens delegation. And this is being, uh, presented by Sloker Homes and Lakeside Greens Golf Course. I don't have specific names though. I just have the organizations.
He'll do the video and then I'll come up and talk.
Okay, yeah, someone just wants to introduce it.
Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah.
I, I would, I would just ask if there's a lead to come up to the podium and if ledge services can put up the, the video, uh, accompanying the presentation, please.
Yeah, I agree. I was, I was thinking our, that's, I think that's what Kent was just sorting out. Was who was leading that? Right. Was there something you wanted to say before we got going on this in terms of process? We're good? Okay, so just, uh, explanation on process of, uh, what today is. So today's our Governance and Priorities meeting. Uh, and what happens from a, uh, process standpoint for us is, uh, we've had a request, uh, from a presenter to come and do a presentation uh, on an idea. Uh, so today, uh, council will see a presentation. Uh, council will have the opportunity to, uh, ask questions. Uh, but within our governance and priorities, uh, structure, uh, today is not a decision-making day. Uh, that governance and priorities is specifically designed, uh, for a conversational piece. Uh, so there's no bylaw change today. There's no, um, land approvals today. There's, there's no approvals that happen anyway. So very similar. Uh, even though, uh, this is, uh, obviously an issue that, uh, people have lots of questions about and care about, which is great. And, and we're glad you're here and those sorts of things. I just wanted to be really clear as to what this particular, uh, part of the process is, uh, because you will see a very similar. So, uh, Mr. Edney?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I'll just add on to that. Just, um, for clarification, this is an information presentation. There is no application in front of the city at this point in time. So there is no decision to be made by council at this point in time.
Correct. Thank you for that clarification. Okay. With that, Wayne, are you taking the lead?
Sure. All right. Good morning. Morning. Um, I'm here to represent the partnership at Lakeside Golf Club. Uh, five years ago, we partnered with Sloker Homes. And we've been trying to do a, uh, small, uh, parcel-type development at the golf course to save the future of, uh, the golf course, to reinvest a bunch of funds back into our aging facility. This is going to be a video that we'll go through and then I'll come up and speak on, um, the different issues that we've addressed over the last, uh, couple of years, uh, with members, members of the Preservation Society, uh, members of the community, that the partnership feels that, uh, that needed to be addressed in this proposal. And we'll go through that. And then, uh, um, we can take questions and everything like that.
Great, thank you. Uh, how long is the video?
Thirteen minutes.
Okay, so with that and say, and knowing that you're going to be coming back up after just from a legislative process, uh, we just need a motion from council uh, to extend, uh, the presentation time, uh, because, uh, public presentations under our procedures are limited to fifteen minutes unless there's a motion made from council to direct. Otherwise, I have a feeling this is going to take longer than fifteen minutes. Uh, so with that, can I have a counselor, Counselor Ryan?
Let's move that the Governance and Priorities Committee standard time limit for presentations for the Lakeside Greens delegation beyond the fifteen-minute limit.
Great, thank you. Comments, questions? Call for the vote? Counselor Schindler? Sorry, Counselor Schindler, we didn't catch that. Okay, and? That's carried. Thank you. Uh, with that, I believe we're going to see the video.
...on the future of Lakeside Golf Course. Together, we aim to preserve this community landmark while ensuring its sustainability for generations to come. Lakeside Golf Course has longed a point of pride in Chestermere. From its scenic fairways to the welcoming clubhouse, it has served as a place for recreation, social gatherings and community events. Unfortunately, financial pressures have mounted over time and attempts to maintain the course have not resolved its growing challenges. Now we are at a crossroads. Either we collaborate to secure Lakeside's future or risk losing this treasured institution entirely. Our hope is to work together as friends and neighbors to find a sustainable path forward. As we move through this presentation, we'll begin with an overview of Lakeside's current challenges and introduce our vision for preserving it. Finally, we'll discuss the specific steps we believe can resolve the community's concerns in the most effective and sustainable way. Next, we present understanding stakeholder viewpoints, exploring perspectives from Lakeside Greens Golf Course Preservation Society, Sloker Homes and Wayne McBean. One essential voice in this conversation is the Lakeside Greens Golf Course Preservation Society. Residents and golfers who deeply value Lakeside as a public recreational space. Their commitment to preserving this course highlights just how important Lakeside is to Chestermere's identity. However, while passionate, their current funding falls short of covering the course's total needs. Their offer focuses primarily on immediate acquisition costs without a clear path for ongoing maintenance or future improvements, which remain crucial for the course's long-term sustainability. Sloker Homes has proposed a limited-scale development that touches only a small portion, less than five percent of the golf course. The revenue generated from these parcels would pay for vital upgrades from refurbishing the clubhouse to improving the car paths and parking facilities. As part of a joint financing model, every dollar contributed by golf club members is matched threefold by Sloker, ensuring a strong reserve for Lakeside's long-term stability. Wayne McBean has been a devoted steward of Lakeside for over three decades, working tirelessly to safeguard its legacy in Chestermere. He recognizes that maintaining the status quo simply isn't feasible under current economic realities. With previous fundraising efforts falling short, Wayne has embraced a balanced approach, small-scale, respectful development to fund essential repairs and renovations, ensuring this course remains a cherished landmark for everyone in the community. Our proposal combines minimal land adjustments with carefully-directed upgrades, ensuring that Lakeside remains a vibrant community asset. By channeling revenue from select development sites back into course improvements and broader local amenities, we protect the golf course's unique character and create lasting benefits for both residents and golfers. This balanced approach upholds tradition while securing the financial stability needed to keep Lakeside thriving for years to come. Our updated twenty twenty-five plan proposes four parcels covering eight point one nine acres, featuring a combination of multi-residential and single-family areas. In addition, all remaining golf course lands will be transferred to the City of Chestermere for the nominal cost of one dollar. No further development will occur on these lands, ensuring they remain dedicated to recreation in perpetuity. The transfer will be subject to a restrictive covenant that prevents any future development on the golf course lands. Upon development approval, the. Upon development approval, the Lakeside Members Society will have the opportunity to purchase Lakeside Golf Club for four million dollars, reflecting fair market value. Slocor Homes will bond four million dollars to fund capital improvements, while the golf course operator will assume responsibility for future maintenance and upkeep, limiting any financial burden to the City of Chestermere. This refined plan reflects our commitment to modernizing Lakeside while ensuring it remains accessible for public enjoyment. As part of our comprehensive plan, we propose several changes to enhance Lakeside's functionality and safety. First, we plan to relocate the maintenance yard to the north side of the driving range, which will provide additional space and improve security. Second, we will establish a new practice chipping and footing area to support and enhance gameplay for all members. Finally, we will engage expert golf course designers to redesign parts of the course, improving the course's playing experience. To visualize our development strategy, here is a map of the entire area with the four designated parcels highlighted. It's important to emphasize that our planned development is minimal relative to the overall size of Lakeside, ensuring that the integrity and beauty of the golf course remain largely unaffected. Now, let's delve into the specifics of our proposed developments, detailing how each parcel will contribute to Lakeside's sustainable future while benefiting the entire community. Parcel one involves the transformation of the former maintenance shed site into two five-story multi-unit residential condominiums on two point six acres in Lakeside's southwest corner. A future land use amendment will propose a direct control, P A C, based on R four. These buildings will feature five-story wood-framed construction with heated underground parcs, offering a total of two hundred and fifteen units with one and two-bedroom layouts. This development reuses existing space efficiently, minimizing the impact on the golf course while providing much-needed housing. Parcel two is adjacent to the clubhouse and covers one point five four acres. It will be developed into a low-rise R four multi-unit residential condominium comprising four-story wood-framed construction with a heated underground arcade. This parcel will add one hundred and thirteen units with one and two-bedroom layouts, seamlessly integrating with the existing clubhouse facilities and ensuring that the development remains harmonious with the surrounding environment. Parcel three is designated for Hole sixteen green, covering two point eight nine acres. This parcel will host seventeen premium single-family R one residential lots located across from lakefront estate homes. Each lot will feature upscale amenities, enhancing the residential appeal while preserving the scenic views and tranquil setting that Lakeside is known for. Parcel four, the new additional site, is separate from Lakeside Green and situated next to the Chestermere Regional Community Association, C R C A. This four-story R four wood-framed condominium development, one point one six acres, will include fifty-six units with one and two-bedroom layouts and underground parcs with fifty-six stalls and twelve surface parking stalls. This planned development on previously unused land ensures that the core golf course remains untouched while still contributing to the community's housing needs. So why take this path? Firstly, it addresses the financial necessity of revitalizing and aging infrastructure. Secondly, it protects an eighteen-hole championship layout, safeguarding the course for future generations. Thirdly, it ensures that most of Lakeside remains green space under city or community oversight. Lastly, this approach guides any development toward areas already well-served by roads and utilities, preventing sprawling construction from encroaching on core parts of the course. Beyond preserving recreational land, this proposal aligns with municipal directives to encourage infill development where infrastructure is already in place, minimizing both costs and ecological impact. It also opens the door to more diverse housing options, addresses the growing demand for residential space, and preserves the aesthetic views cherished by current residents. Additionally, redesigned holes such as twelve and sixteen would enhance safety for golfers and the surrounding community. Finally, should council approve the municipal development plan amendment and subsequent land use change, it would trigger the transfer of the remaining recreational land to the City of Chestermere thirty-six months postapproval for the nominal cost of one dollar, subject to a restrictive covenant. This transfer would support the growth and ongoing recreational needs of the city and allow for mindful community stewardship of one of Chestermere's most beloved amenities. The generated funds from these limited developments will directly support much-needed enhancements to Lakeside. New retaining walls, renovations to the clubhouse and on-course restrooms, replacing aging irrigation systems, improving parking lots and car paths, and establishing a modern maintenance facility. We'll also collaborate with expert course designers to update holes twelve and sixteen for a safer, more engaging golf experience. To move forward, we require amendments to Chestermere's municipal development plan, shifting roughly eight point one nine acres from parks and open space to residential neighborhood. A subsequent land use amendment and development permit application in April of twenty twenty-five will detail design specifics. At each stage, we're committed to public engagement and council review, ensuring every voice is heard before final approval. As we look ahead, our initial Governance and Priorities Committee meeting with the City Council is scheduled for April first, twenty twenty-five, followed by the submission of a municipal development plan amendment in April of twenty twenty-five. Throughout this process, we will maintain an open dialogue with the Preservation Society, local residents, and community stakeholders to ensure everyone is informed and to address any concerns transparently. In closing, we believe that revitalizing Lakeside through mindful, limited development is our best opportunity to preserve this beloved golf course. By embracing collaboration, we can avoid large-scale redevelopment, invest in new facilities, and ensure that Chestermere's residents continue to enjoy Lakeside's scenic fairways and green spaces.
Thank you.
So at this time, I, I do want to talk about the four sites, um, that we're looking at developing. The first site, uh, that I want to talk about is the overflow parking lot by the clubhouse. Uh, this land was only purchased five years ago, um, by the Partnership and Slocor. It's never, ever been used as recreational land. It's never been used as golf course land. It's an overflow parking lot. Site number two is the maintenance yard. The gold T-box would be affected, um, but the rest of the land, um, over there is just the maintenance yard. It's never been used as recreational land. It's never been used as golf course land. Site three over by the Rec- uh, recreational center, Hole fifteen. We just purchased this land five years ago. It's never been used as recreational land. It's never been used as golf course land. Site four, Hole sixteen, would be redesigned into a targeted par four or along par three. The total golf course recreational land lost in this development would be less than three point five percent of the total land. Now, over the last couple of years, um, we've had multiple meetings, um, with, uh, various groups from Preservation Society members to, uh, the Lakeside Green Society members, to homeowners, to just members that live on the course and live off the course. And these are four of the major things that, uh, that I wanted to address with this development. Um, first, number one, the only reason why we got involved with Slocor Homes in the first place is to try to sell some of our own privately-owned land, um, to raise money to put back into the golf course. And by doing this for a site, uh, we've received four million dollars from Slocor Homes to reinvest back into Lakeside's aging facility. Uh, one of the things different on this proposal from two years ago is if it is approved, then all remaining golf course lands will be transferred to the city for one dollar, addressing no future development, which was a huge concern last time. So that will be addressed. Number three, the city can move the property line over on hole number twelve and fourteen. Um, if you haven't seen where the property line, uh, uh, goes, that the, uh, golf course, that we own, um, on twelve, it goes right in the middle of our pond, down the left side of the fairway, continues on down thirteen, all the way to fourteen. Once the city owns that land, you can move that property line over, saving, um, your recreational land. So not one blade of recreational land will be lost. Then finally, selling the golf course to the membership. January first, twenty thirty, we would love to sell the golf course after the four million dollars has been reinvested, after the land has been transferred to the city. Sell the golf course to the membership for four million dollars. I truly believe selling it to a membership, they can run it as a nonprofit, so there's no R O I to partners, and that this golf course will remain long-term and viable for future generations that join in Lakeside. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Great, thank you. Uh, looking to council, does anyone, uh, Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, through you too, Mr. McBean. Uh, so some of the words that, you know, I've kind of noted down here is you talk about, uh, the, uh, financial necessity, saving the future of the golf course. Uh, what you've proposed to me, you know, sounds like, uh, Plan A. Now, do you have a Plan B or Plan C?
No. We've been negotiating for the last two years, um, with these groups. It hasn't gone anywhere. It's either going, we're going to be moving forward with this foresight development, or the partnership will be selling, controlling shares to Slocor Homes.
Counselor Grant?
Thank you, Mayor. Through the chair to the presenter, um, Mister McBean, you mentioned that the, um, you, you recently purchased some parcels of land.
Five years ago? Yep.
What, what was the intent of that purchase if the economic viability of the golf course was not there at that time?
For developing that land to create more funds to put back into the golf course.
Okay. Um, my second question would be, do you know what the current membership, uh, number is?
Right around one eighty-five.
Twenty-five, okay. I'm good for now.
Thank you. Uh, Deputy Mayor Sambo?
Thank you, your worship, and through you, thanks for the presentation. You mentioned one thing I was looking for clarification on. Uh, it said infills. And the language on it said this supports municipal directives by building where infrastructure already exists. And I'm wondering what municipal directives you refer?
That would be a cross-question for Peter Powell here with Slocor Homes.
With his worship's.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Just curious about that because that, that's us.
Yeah, that's you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor, council, uh, my name is Peter Powell. I'm the president of Slocor Homes. Um, in the current, uh, municipal development plan, it highlights, uh, the opportunity of densification slash infill, uh, development. So it's just part of the current municipal development. I just came out of a little bit of rhonkitis, so sorry, my voice is not the best.
So just to clarify, that's just referencing that is allowed under the M D P, not a particular request?
I think it is a, um, ambition under the current municipal development plan to pursue infill development where practical.
Any other questions from ca-? I have a few, uh, but Counselor Grant?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually had one more question come to mind, and it's about the clubhouse portion of the property. Does the current clubhouse have sufficient parking for the operation of the golf course as it sits today?
I'm not a golf course operator. Yes, we do.
Yes, you do. Okay.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Andawa?
Thank you, your worship. As I just want to follow up the question, uh, with my fellow counselor, Ryan. Like he asked, is there any A, B, or C plan? Like, why there's no any other plan? Can you please bit explain? I just need to know.
Yep. Um, A plan is to do this foresight, uh, development. B plan, um, if it's not approved by council, I'll be selling my controlling shares to Slocor Homes, and he'll be the owner of the golf course. Over the past two years, we've been meeting with members of the Preservation Society, members of Lakeside Greens, um, Society Board, members of the community that are members and not members. We've tried to negotiate, um, lots of different plans. We had four different, uh, lease options turned down. We had four different purchase options turned down. We had membership renegotiation meetings, um, with them to try to make a more viable, uh, membership agreement. All of those meetings have stalled. This is your option A, option B, and I'm totally good with it. If the city doesn't want a golf course and doesn't want to move forward with this development, I'm super happy, and I think everybody else here would be happy. We either do it or we don't, but I think we need to move on. I think everybody here, including myself, we just want to move on one way or the other. If you want to do a foresight development, let's save Lakeside. Let's pass it on to the members. Let them run it. City can own the land. If you don't want to do it, I'm all out. I'll be selling my shares to Slocor Homes, and then you can deal with Slocor Homes. I, I am not interested in owning a golf course that doesn't have the means to fix up the facilities.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Uh, thank, uh, counsel, I'll come back to you here in a moment if there's any other questions. I just have a couple. Uh, within, I believe it was in the video it said, um, the preservation focus on immediate acquisition with no plans for improvement. How do you know that they don't have plans for improvement? Because if I, I will caveat my question with if.
You'd have to ask them.
But you made the statement. So my question is, if somebody was coming to you with an offer to purchase, they're just purchasing. They don't necessarily need to come to you with a plan of what they're going to be doing after that. So I'm wondering why the statement that, why you believe that they don't have a plan, why that would stop you? Because if someone else is coming, they want to, you want out. You've made that very clear.
Yep. I want out if this development isn't approved, yes.
Right.
Correct.
So if somebody else wanted to make a purchase of the golf course, which would allow you to get out, would you entertain that?
Depends what the purchase price is.
So then the golf course could be for sale to somebody else who's interested in purchasing it.
I would not sell this golf course for less than ten million dollars right now.
Great.
And let me explain on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Peter Powell is a partner, so he'd have to be bought out as well.
Right.
So the land value is around six million dollars.
Yep.
The golf course value is around four.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Uh, a couple of other questions. You made a statement that there is a difference right now in this presentation about all the lands we transfer to the city, and that is different than the previous application. So that, that was a statement that you made in, uh, one of your four things. So the question I would have with regards to that is, are you saying then that you've never had conversations with previous councils about the city owning the land if the city was to move forward with any kind of development? That this is the first time that this has come to a city council?
No, that's not what I said. I said our previous, uh, proposal before
Yeah.
did not include the land transfer. This one does.
Okay.
And we've had lots of conversations in between.
Right, right. Okay, thank you. Um, I'm also wondering too then on that. Uh, so we had an example of this, uh, last week, uh, over the last month. Uh, and, and I understand that, uh, even within members of our audience today, uh, you may have some disagreement on this. But, um, council really felt that, uh, there was a proposal that came to us, um, a number of weeks ago, uh, where, uh, a developer wanted to do a land use change, uh, and there was concerns with regards to density. Uh, that particular developer, even before, uh, we came, uh, to the public hearing, uh, paid attention, saw the comments that were, uh, addressed on social media. Uh, there was other comments that popped up, uh, from the public hearing. Uh, and that developer actually took, um, the initiative to work with our administration to come up with a solution, uh, that actually created a solution where there was a net zero density increase and got rid of an apartment building, right? So, uh, with that net zero increase, right, so this is a solution that they, that was come forward that, that that happened, right? So what my question within that is, that happened because, uh, the developer in that case listened to concerns from our community and came up with a different solution. I'm curious about how have you listened to what the community brought forward at the public hearing that was held, I believe now two years ago?
Yep.
Um, how does this address the concerns that we saw, uh, that were brought up at that public hearing?
Yeah, the, the three biggest concerns, I think, um, that I listened to very well. Number one, um, meeting with those different groups, there was zero flexibility, not one house can go up, zero development. So how does, uh, that doesn't really work, uh, for us. Number two, um, that I heard, uh, quite extensively was, this is the tip of the iceberg. If we allow this development to go through, what stops you in five years, ten years from redeveloping the rest of the lands or, or more lands? We addressed that. We listened. We addressed it, and we're giving the City of Chestermere all the land. all the land. So I think that, uh, is a very good listen and a very good answer to that. Uh, number two was the loss of recreational land. I clearly explained to you that the loss of a maintenance yard, an overflow parking lot, and a dump site over by, uh, the rec center isn't quality recreational land lost. Um, sixteen will be redesigned, but once we give the city of Chestermere the land, they can simply move the property line now over, recreating more recreational usable land, and that addresses that problem. So not one blade of recreational land will be lost under this deal. So I think I've listened very, very well. Besides to the one hundred percent no to all development, I've listened to everything.
Great, thank you. Uh, Counsel, I mean, uh, Counselor Grant?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I have a few questions here that have kind of developed as you were speaking. Um, previously on the golf course, there was a development that was approved. Can you speak to what the agreement was at that time for that development?
Oh, it was fifteen years ago, my brother did that, and we tried to do a development over on eleven and the driving range, and there was actually a lot of people in support of that one. Um, it was voted down by one vote to do the entire place, and they lowered it from, if I remember, the density from six homes to five homes.
Okay. Um, also you had mentioned that you believe the, the golf course land is worth six million dollars.
Correct.
Can you tell me how you got at that number, how you quantify it?
So five years ago, we sold fifty percent of the golf course land, not the golf course operations, to Slocor Homes for one point five million dollars. They borrowed against it for eight percent. That's five hundred thousand dollars over the last five years. That puts it at two million dollars. Slocor Homes, I can't talk about the expenses, but I'm going to guess they probably spent about a quarter million dollars. So to buy out Slocor Homes, you're probably looking at around five million dollars. We still own the other fifty percent. Um, so I put a million dollars on that, and then four million dollars for the golf course operations, which is exactly what I would sell it to the golf membership, as I mentioned earlier, January first, twenty thirty.
So what I'm hearing is that it's, you're getting that value from money invested-
Correct.
Into it, not necessarily market rate of-
If we, if we were to sell it at market rate, rate now with the investment of Slocor Homes, and what it would cost to buy out Slocor Homes, there would be nothing. It wouldn't be worth it.
Okay. Uh, I have one last question, and it's for our administration. What is the current land use designation of the golf course?
I'm just going to pull up the land use bylaw, get you the exact terminology, so that'll take me a minute or two.
Please do, thanks, Liz.
Deputy Mayor Sanbo.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I believe my question's actually for administration also, sorry, Liz. Um, so there, there are some concerns that I would expect members of the community would bring forward that haven't, um, come forward, because whenever we're talking about development, there's a lot of concern around infrastructure and how that would, um, how that would be impacted by further density, and this is an older, one of the oldest neighborhoods in Chestermere. So I suppose my question is, if there is an application intending to come forward, at what point would an impact analysis be done on the infrastructure? On roads, on underground, um, but on everything really? And who would be responsible for that?
Uh, Ms. Harvettish?
If I may, the land use bylaw indicates that this is called special recreation, also known as SPR. Lot of rules in that, in the land use bylaw. We can provide that information if needed to council. And the land use bylaw is on the city's website, so we can, anyone can review the, the rules that are there. Um, in regards to the second question, um, my answer is through the mayor to all of council. Um, the, the process for the different studies that would be required depend on the application stage. So at the municipal development plan application stage, which we anticipate would be the first application that would come in, we would be looking to understand a high-level version of what, um, I think I'm hearing that I'm not loud enough.
Yeah.
Which I've never heard in my life before, literally. Um, I will just snuggle into Sandy a bit. Um, so when we, when we look at the municipal development plan application, which we anticipate would be the very first application that we would see in a set of multiples that would have to go through the process, we would require a high-level, um, servicing strategy be provided. And that servicing strategy would indicate basics of where services would come from, what they would be, and each layer into that process. So eventually a land use bylaw amendment subdivision, development permit. Again, that assumes the one before it is approved by council. Um, then we would get more detailed studies. So it would be something that we would look at at different scales depending on the application.
Deputy Mayor?
And just to the second part of that, whose responsibility would it be to build those plans and put that forward?
Through the mayor to Deputy Mayor Sanbo. Um, the applicant prepares all of those materials, and then we review those materials. So we have the qualified professionals that do a, a review of them, and oftentimes we go back and forth a bit, um, to ensure that they meet all of our standards. And so the applicant is required to also ensure that they are hiring the correct professionals, meaning, um, you don't have, if you're doing a sanitary servicing study, you would make sure that you have a engineer qualified in that discipline to prepare the studies. And we require that they be stamped and designed accordingly by such professionals.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you very much. So follow-up question through to the presenters then, um, if there's a submission planning to come to April, has that work been done? Are you, are you prepared with these analysis to come forward, council?
Uh, thank you, uh, for the question, um, Mayor, Council. Um, we have prepared a high-level study by Magna Engineering addressing any concerns regarding, uh, stormwater, sewer, uh, so the utilities. Uh, Bergans Drive, uh, the name says it already, is a drive, so we'll have, uh, ample spare capacity.
Any other questions from council? Okay, uh, Mr. Adney, I'm going to put you on the spot, and remember I said nice things about you earlier. Um, question I have for you is, this is a bit of a complicated one in terms of it's not just a land use redesignation, right? There are some suggested, uh, contractual things, uh, that, uh, if this was to proceed, so nothing's been agreed to, right? Uh, there's just been conversations. I'm just wondering if for the public, because the part I'm asking about would be administrative thing to come to council, um, the negotiations on that, if you will, uh, can you just talk a little bit and maybe offer some clarity around, um, that piece of it? Because it's, it may seem like it is just a simple, yeah, well, the, we do this, and then, uh, that legal obligation happens. Can you maybe just speak to that just a little bit, uh, just so our public has a clear understanding? What I'm referring to is the, the business proposal, if you will, that's been proposed that, uh, if this were to happen and the city acquires the land for a dollar, the lease-back option, all those sorts of stuff. So I'm just asking for our C O, just to maybe clarify a little bit of that, because it's a little bit more than just a land use redesignation.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. So through you to council, um, yeah, for clarity at this point, uh, we've had some meetings with Slocor and with Mr. McBean, um, where this concept has been presented to us, but we haven't really gone into the detail of what would the city requirements be in return for doing this? We also haven't gone down the road yet of what would the legalities look like of us now taking over that land, who's, you know, there's been some high-level comments around leasing the golf course back to Lakeside, what would the term of that look like, what the, what the conditions look like, what would happen to property taxes, who operates this, all of that kind of stuff? So we haven't done any of that kind of work. Um, and you're hitting, I think, the nail on the head too as part of this. If there's a sort of condition from Lakeside that, you know, as A happens, B will happen, we need to really spend some time with our legal team to structure what that would look like, what those trigger points are, um, what the obligations. I've heard bonds, um, I've heard committees of the golf club to help decide how some of that money's reinvested. There's a lot of details that would have to go into that. So I think, um, I would probably look, it would be some significant work for administration. Um, we do have the capability to do that, but I'd probably look for direction from council to engage in those discussions with the group, to see what it actually looks like on the other end, right? We've seen publicly what their, their side of it looks like, but we haven't vetted it from our side at all.
Right. Right. And that would not be done at a gap meeting though, because that would be at a regular, that direction to administration would be done at a regular meeting of council.
Uh, that is correct.
I'm asking a question, I knew the answer to.
Yeah.
I just want to clarify for public how that would work. Great. Uh, council, any other questions with regards to, uh, this particular presentation? The only other question I have is just with regards to, uh, the five-story and four-story multi-units with the underground parking. I am not an engineer, nor do I play one on TV. Uh, I'm just wondering though about the viability of an underground parking and the water table in Chestermere, uh, if, uh, how that would be addressed? And I fully admit I'm speaking and asking a question way outside of my expertise zone, uh, but I, we all are aware that we have a high water table in Chestermere, which is close, uh, to the lake slash reservoir, uh, so I'm just wondering about, uh, that viability, uh, how that would, how that would work in, within your proposal, because that's what's in your proposal.
Yeah.
And sorry about your voice, that, getting asked these big questions coming off rhonchitis, I-
I know, it's, it's okay. I, I can deal with it as long as, uh, you can, uh, uh, hopefully, uh, still understand me. Um, thank you for your question. Uh, it's an engineering question, it's definitely a little bit more detailed. Um, uh, we did a preliminary geotechnical investigation, and so we will try to design it, of course, as, you know, elevated as we can. Um, as you know, the, the, uh, clubhouse is kind of relative to the road, a bit in a depression, so that helps, uh, a meter and a half or two meters even. So by and large, we, we are comfortable with the results of the preliminary geotech that we can build underground parquet. Uh, the one caveat I should probably point out is site number four, where, uh, we have not specifically drilled that site, but I drove by it today and, um, I see a sizable excavation there, uh, for the, uh, water pipeline or sewage line that goes to, um, to, uh, what is it, uh, on, uh, Clearwater, sorry. And, um, so that, that hole is dry, so I'm not too, too worried.
Okay, great, thank you. And then, uh, has your, um, uh, has your organization, uh, given the unpopularity of, uh, high-rise condominiums within our community, uh, has your, uh, organization considered other housing types, uh, if this type of development were, if any type of development were to proceed?
Um, we looked at it from a viability point of view and generating the four million of reinvestment in the golf course, um, at the same time minimizing the footprint of our development. Uh, and then the only, uh, call it logical remaining conclusion is the current development proposal. We did limit it, for example, originally, we had the whole, uh, clubhouse area redesigned, so that was a, a way larger development than the hundred twenty-five units now. So in summary, we have tried to limit our footprint as much as we can, but that, that comes with density in order to get enough value out of it.
Right, okay, thank you. Counsel, last opportunity before we call for a motion to accept for information. Great, thank you. Uh, any final comments from our presenters before, uh, we accept for information? Uh, Mr. McBean?
Um, I've maybe, I've, I've maybe one from, from S- S- Slocor Homes.
Yeah.
I, I know, uh, some members of the public, uh, have actively advocated that, you know, our staying power or ability to, to stay there for a long time is questionable or for whatever reason. Um, I want to, uh, uh, explain that the Slocor Group has been around since nineteen thirty-five. We just celebrated our ninetieth birthday. Um, we're active on both Europe as well as North America, uh, being USA and Canada. Uh, and I'm not a family member, I'm coming from another family that is around since the sixteen hundreds with land ownership. So we have a long track record of, of investing in land. I, I fully, fully, fully support Wayne's passion to keep the golf course open. I fully support this, um, compromise option. I realize it's a compromise, um, I realize it's a compromise for the, um, Preservation Society if this development goes forward. Um, however, I have no hesitation to own the golf course outright, and, um, it's not a viable business to own outright, and that comes to a logical conclusion that I will pursue the land value, uh, which I honestly don't want to do, I want to support Wayne.
Yep, thank you.
Just to wrap everything up, because again, as I stated earlier, I think everybody in this room, everybody in this community, I've lived here for thirty-three years, um, we just need an answer, which way to go. Um, I truly want to, I want to save this golf course, um, by doing this development. Again, to summarize, it's going to get, uh, Slocor Homes to reinvest four million dollars into the golf course. The land will be transferred to the city to protect that land, uh, for future non-development, and then turn the golf course over to the membership for four million dollars. Uh, to touch, uh, base on Kent with the, the lease, my ideas on the lease would be a ninety-nine-year, fully transferable, uh, lease that's renewable, um, that gets transferred over to the membership, and as long as it stays as an eighteen-hole golf course, then the golf course stays in the community forever. Um, that's what I see, uh, for the lease, as well as any capital expenditures on the landowner, which would be the city at that time. All the capital projects and all the capital, um, um, dollars would be part of the golf course, not the landowner. So that would come with the lease as well as the golf course owners. Um, so until January first, uh, twenty thirty, it would be the partnership, then we would transfer that over to the membership, um, if they're willing to purchase four million. Also, the four million that's going to be invested, uh, by a bond, um, once, uh, if the foresight development is approved, the partnership would want the membership involvement if they're going to be purchasing the golf course a few years down the road after that. Um, this is the only way I see saving the golf course for future generations. I want to see the golf course, uh, stay here in Chestermere. My parents live on the golf course. I live in the community, my son lives in the community, my son's the head superintendent. I don't want to see it go anywhere. Unfortunately, Slocor Homes, uh, Peter's been very, very, very supportive. Slocor Homes would probably like to shut the golf course down and go over full development. Um, so if there is a lot of pushback on this, I'm not interested again in running a golf course, um, that is tied, uh, by the financial restraints that it is without a large injection. So I will be selling, if the foresight development is turned down, I will be selling my shares. And unfortunately, I think Slocor Homes will get exactly what they want, access to the entire hundred and twenty-two acres of the golf course property. So I hope that doesn't happen. I hope we save the golf course. Um, it's going to be up to you guys.
But of course, option C, to be fair, is you've also expressed that there is an option C.
Yep, ten million.
That, that have ten million dollars. And while there may be disagreement in the crowd on that number, I think it is worth noting that there is another option.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so with that, uh, any responses from, no, we're good? We're good? Okay. Uh, can I have the motion to accept for information, please? Uh, can I have, uh, Counselor Grant?
Thank you, Mayor. I moved that the Governance and Priorities Committee accept the Lakeside Greens delegation for information.
Uh, comments, questions from council? Call for the vote? Counselor Schindler?
I'm in favor.
Thank you. And that's carried. Counsel, is there any other motions you'd like to make, uh, with regards to this matter? Great. Uh, with that, we'll take a ten-minute break and come back at eleven forty-five. Great. With that, we'll take a ten-minute break and come back at eleven forty-five. Good morning, everyone. Coming back from our break here and our next, our next one is our election signage bylaw being presented by Matthew Bascariol.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and to the committee. Matt Bascariol, on behalf of administration, presenting to you a report for information with respect to the election signage bylaw. A couple of comments that I'd like to make off the cuff. Administration apologizes. There was a motion that you'll see in the RFI that indicated that this report was to come to a council in March. Of course, that timeline didn't make the cut. So I apologize on behalf of administration for that. Secondly, you'll also see the recommendations to Governance and Priorities Committee. Those two bullet points are in fact not recommendations. So what you're going to see forthcoming when the clerks put it on the screen is just a referral motion to get this onto a April council meeting for consideration. So that's my first few comments with respect to the report in front of you. We have a map that I'd like to put up on the screen as well. Because within the bylaw itself, you'll note that there are, I think it's section eight, there is a list of prescribed, proposed criteria where signs ought not to be placed. One of the bullet points, again, on the RFI is to have the committee provide input on which streets are permitted to advertise a second election signage. So I'd like to thank the clerks and our GIS team for putting this map together. This map showcases, if we could zoom in just a little bit. It showcases a couple of criteria within the draft bylaw that we included for illustration for the committee's consideration, just and for your information. So we have the playground, so section eight point two point three in the proposed bylaw, playgrounds and school zones, where signs ought not to be placed, that's included in the demarcation on the, on the screen. Eight point two point four, on a traffic island or road median, the marking is on the map for your information. Eight point two point six, on a transit structure, that is also included as well. The rest of them are not included because that would be too much noise and clutter on the map. So that's just for council's information and administration wanted to illustrate that for you as well. Another note that administration would like to make, when this does come to a council meeting in April, a land use bylaw, minor textual amendments will be coming and accompanying this as well for council's consideration. Just due to the fact that there are some textual amendments that need to be made in the land use bylaw to accompany this election signage bylaw. I'll hold my comments there. I'll open it up to the floor for discussion and any questions forthcoming from the committee. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Looking at counsel, any questions or comments with regards to the bylaw? Deputy Mayor Sambo.
Thank you, Your Worship. And just a question for clarity. Are we discussing the bylaw in its entirety or are we offering thoughts on where signs should be placed?
All of it.
All of it.
Wide open discussion.
Wide open discussion. I mean, in that case, just two comments within the bylaw itself. Under six point three. Election signs may not exceed one meter squared in area or one meter in height unless otherwise authorized by the city. I wonder about that language, otherwise authorized by the city. Because if there's not a clearly defined process for that, then that opens up commentary around fairness. And all of that. So I, I don't necessarily have a recommendation on that, unless I would personally remove it. But just wanted to put that there.
Sorry, just, sorry for interrupting Deputy Mayor. I had the exact same thing and I crossed it out. And so I, I would, if it can't be crossed out for some reason, I would love to hear that back from administration. But I had the exact same thing highlighted and crossed out and would love to see it not be a thing. This is the rule. Follow the rule with regards to that is, is my stance on it. But would love to hear from administration on that point, if there's a reason why it has to be in there?
Absolutely. Mr. Chair, to the committee and for its information, this was reviewed through our legal council. So this is encompassing best practice, but certainly administration will take it back to see and incorporate the committee's commentary into that. In terms of maybe some language modification instead of the or an and or a full-on strike. But we'll make note of that in the report forthcoming for council's consideration as well. Thank you.
Mr. Edney?
Yeah, thank you. And just to follow up on, on Matt's comments. One thing I may suggest that we look at too, just so council's aware, is this one meter in height. We got into a lot of debate with a bunch of candidates of what one meter in height meant. So we will likely look to define that further. There was debate of whether it was one meter off the ground to the bottom of the sign. Or if it's one meter to the top of the sign, that means there's no ability then for a one-meter sign to have any posts underneath of it, right? Because it would have to sit flush with the ground. So we'll maybe, just reading this, take this back and clarify that as well. Because I know that was a big source of contention for me in my prior role during the election. Was that one meter in height definition.
Yeah, and where this is going, and just this is history for me too, to the committee is, I think what administration will do is incorporate a lot of the history with respect to this review. Prior to it coming back to council for its consideration in terms of what were the pinch points in the past. And we'll incorporate that just for the committee's level of comfort.
Yeah, I would also, given the fact that I believe you are starting week three right now. I would invite you to go back and the first time that this was discussed, there was lots of those pinch points that were already highlighted as well. That's how this came. So I would invite you to, even when you have opportunity, you know, spare time, to go back and have a review of some of those too, because that's, there was, there was lots that was mentioned. And it was really fresh in all of our minds coming right off the election. Because I believe we even did that possibly in August was when that conversation happened. So I just remember it was fresh off the election and it was like on all of our minds at that time. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll ask one more major one for now. Under twelve point one. This is talking about the fine amount, not exceeding ten thousand dollars for an offense. Honestly, I just find that really high. That's going to be many times over what most people would spend on their entire campaign. And if, if we did choose to request a fine of $10,000, I think that would be contested.
I there is a fee schedule on the back though. So there's a fee schedule on the back that outlines all of that. And I think one of the things from legal, my understanding too, is that that's a standard within bylaws that it's not exceeding that. I believe that. And then it's like, if you're getting that, it is ridiculously egregious what you've done for that to happen. And again, there is a schedule B specified penalties outlined in the back. Do I have that correct?
Yes, through the chair, that is that is correct to the committee. It is the standard practice. If you would do, you know, if administration were to do kind of a scan, a jurisdictional scan, we would find that same practice at year two through other municipal jurisdictions. So it's just kind of that same best practice.
And if I may add, so really what it covers, if you look at say sub second or subsequent offenses, they're $200. It limits us at giving 50 of those. And like the mayor said, if you're at a point where we have to give you 50 tickets, you're there's something really going wrong. Cause I think the first step would be that education component. For something like this, our goal isn't going to be to actually be finding people. It's just going to be to reminding them to following the rules. So as as Matt has mentioned, that's really just a placeholder in there to limit the damage if somebody really was egregiously not following the bylaw.
Yeah. And I would say I had opportunity a couple of weeks ago to do a ride along with one of our CPOs. And that was what I saw in practice a lot was that education first standpoint, then moving to enforcement as needed. So I do think that that is a practice that our CPOs are following on a on the day to day basis is that education first standpoint.
Can I clarify on that? Cause I think I think maybe I'm misunderstanding how the specified penalties work, but I'm I'm hearing it now that you're explaining this. So the $10,000 is not a one off. These specified penalties, that is the amount. So it would be $10,000 in aggregate. That's what we're saying. Okay. I had I had misunderstood how that works. I thought that was a recommended amount that each one could go up to 10,000.
It to just clarify to Mr. Edney's point, it's a education first. So our CPOs and to his comments, now I'm I'm understanding it's a proactive approach to educate it. And then if there's some egregious violations, it is not $10,000 upfront. There is that education component ticketed in accordance with schedule B fines. Ticketed again, ticketed again. So it limits the amount of tickets one were to one could potentially receive.
And there's still an appeal process on any ticket given.
Correct.
Okay, councillor Ryan.
Thank you, through your worship. If I may refer to section eight point two point one with respect to the city owned facility and let's just take City Hall and maybe the fire hall as an example. So I get the, you know, I do understand the part where the signs should not be on the facility. But what would constitute as to where the facility starts or ends as an example, City Hall. Would somebody be able to put a sign maybe just outside on the lawn? Well, not directly. But maybe along the road in front of City Hall and the same goes for the fire hall, right? Because you've got the fire hall, but then there's that pedestrian area. Does that include City Hall, City owned facility?
Yeah. And great question, councillor, just through the chair to the committee and to you councillor. We did define so in the map, just to illustrate those city owned facilities, they are outlined there. That would take a little bit more work from administration prior to us bringing it back to define the parameters on the map. I foresee a bylaw whereby and I'll get clerks to note this whereby we would have multiple schedules probably with different shape files of each city owned piece of land to accompany the bylaw when we present it to council in April. So that would better define the city owned pieces, parcels of land, City Hall, fire halls and the rest.
Yeah. And thank you for that. And if I may suggest it's probably already, you know, what you guys are going to do anyway, with every nomination package, you know, one of these maps can be given to potential candidates and of course on the website. Wonderful. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, absolutely.
I'm sorry, councillor Grant.
Thank you, Mayor. As as we spoke about this before, you may all know I'm not really big on restricting things like this. I think that this map is very onerous and I think that the restrictions laid out in the fee schedule are very onerous. 15 meters of an intersection, 10 meters from a crosswalk, two meters from a driveway, two meters from a walking surface. What is the intent of this bylaw? Cause I think really what's happening here is we're going to drive more signs everywhere than allowing people to put traffic signs in high vis areas or not traffic signs, election signs in high vis areas. Which which I think would actually be my preference in that we allow advertising, election advertising in these areas so that people don't feel they have to go put 15 signs throughout a neighborhood. That's not a question. I guess I'm making more of a statement as usual, but that's how I feel about it. I think this is restrictive. I think it is too onerous on candidates who are really trying to do a lot during election period. They're trying to meet their constituents. They're trying to win an election and they need to spend three days figuring out where a sign is going to go within a community. So I would like, I would like to see it dialed back, but that's just my opinion.
Mr. Edney.
Thank you, your worship through the council and councillor Grant. I think that was one of the discussions, if I recall, back in August. I don't even think I was in this seat yet at that point. But I think one of the discussions was could we frame the bylaw instead of where you can't as to where you can. So I believe the team that worked on this bylaw took it from examples from other cities around us and just sort of modified it to fit our purposes in Chestermere. But that may be the other way to look at it is to define where they can go instead of where they can't go. I know there's a lot of concerns in medians and intersections with safety. Remember, we don't know how many candidates we'll get. I think last time we had in the neighborhood of 30. Everyone tries to put a one meter by one meter by one meter tall sign at an intersection. And now we have safety problems. We have kids crossing and crosswalks in the medians, et cetera. It makes it difficult. I know it's only a month and a week, but it makes it difficult for maintenance. It's really trying to to look at all of those together, but I do see your point that it might be easier to put pink on the map of where you can put them instead of where you can't put them. You can always put them on someone's private lawn, right? This is just to the city owned facilities and infrastructure. So that may be something we could look at as we draft through this of a
I guess to further expand upon my my point here, Mr. Edney is that, you know, we talk about the Patterson sign. We want to put that by intersections and and high congestion areas. Is that a safety issue?
So I think they're different things. And I think that's what this is trying to capture is where in that intersection are you putting it, right? We saw some examples on Chestermere Boulevard where people had their huge sign three feet from the right turn lane. So that's really, it's not saying you can't put it there, but it's saying make it off to the side or make it so it's not, it's visible, but it's not you know, a safety hazard or getting in the way. So we'll take this back, Matt and I, and and look at some more of those details to make sure we're not, I think what you're getting at is we're not missing the point. If you're running for office, you need to be visible and you need to see it. And we're not trying to restrict that. We're just trying to limit some of the problems we saw in the last election when this wasn't clear of some of the sorry, the awful places that people put signs and got mad because they got moved. So we're just trying to limit some of that.
Yeah, I to that point, I'm not sure if I feel quite as strongly as councillor Grant on this. However, where I would agree is I would love to see a simplified version. And and if I may be so bold as to simplify down to, don't put them in playground zones. Make sure that we're not blocking traffic. Cause you're right. We saw signs last election that literally one of the pigs was like in the road. Right? And then the other one was just off the road. And when I look at this too, within 10 meters of a crosswalk that is not located at an intersection. What does that mean? 10 meters on someone's private property? Cause that's how that technically reads, right? Or then within two meters of a driveway crossing or entrance to a private property. So now we're dictating to our residents where they can put signs on their own private property. So because that's how that reads. It's not under election signs may not be placed. And then these are all the bullet points. So I think, Mr. Edney, you said this is for city property, Mr. Edney, respectfully, I disagree because it's a bullet point under the other section. So I would love to see. I think this is what councillor Grant was getting at simplified. Here's what you can do. Here's what you can't. Go. Right? And and I think if it falls under the idea of safety, I this is where I would support non playground zones. Even though schools are high visibility areas, I get it. Love it. But keeping it away from a school zone for that safety reason makes a ton of sense to me. Right? Keeping it away from high traffic turns and stuff like that absolutely makes sense to me. So I would just love to see a much more simplified version.
Yeah. And I think through the chair, one of the things Matt and I were talking about this morning as we were looking at this again too, is visibility is also subjective. It's different for Matt and his car than it is for me and my truck. So we'll have to worry, we'll have to think about again with heights of signs, size of signs, that kind of thing. Maybe there's a difference for, maybe there's a way to tackle it through that, but we hear what you're saying. We'll come back with something that's a little more straightforward.
Yeah. And I would also say, sorry, I would also say the other one that I think could be a non negotiable for all of us up here is in roundabouts and middle medians. Right? That also makes sense. So you can't put them in roundabouts and you can't put them in middle medians. That should be ours. Let's not try and argue it from the idea of the the what was it? The provincial highway act or whatever it is like, because that made no sense to anybody, right? Just the idea like I, that's what I think the simplified versions would be. And I'm seeing a lot of nodding with regards to playground zones, high traffic turn areas and middle medians makes a ton of sense, right? And then on city property or yeah, I just think of quick bullet point. I think this could be a very simple bylaw in my opinion.
So, Mr. Chair, administration agrees. So what we'll do is we'll take back these comments in the report to council in April. I know we have a lot of work to do ahead of us with respect to this, but in the report, we're going to talk about what we also heard from this committee. And it's going to be reflective in the bylaw. I do think there's a hand up in the Microsoft teams as well, though, for it to speak. So I'll yield.
Okay, I'll come to that here in a moment too. I love how we keep saying in April. It is not lost on me that today is April 1st. Right? It just, that is just not lost on me right now. Sorry, councillor Randawa, and then we'll go with councillor Schindler after.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you to administration for the hard work. Gets the roundabout and the construction zone is also last time is it is very vocal on the construction areas. The sign is because their truck is coming in and out and visibility, it was quite loud in the community that time. And I know there's so many no's, no's, we cannot put here, they here, that makes sense where we can put, I need to see that one too. Where the candidate can put, it makes makes easy to understand where they cannot and where they can. That's the only change. I would like to see. Thank you.
Councillor Schindler.
Yeah. Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
All right. So I'm listening to what you guys are saying and you know, simplification is absolutely key to this. I'm thinking though, that we should have with the with the packages that that come out to candidates, a map, just like what is shown on that screen, showing exactly where people can put their sign as simple and easy as possible. You can put your sign at this intersection. You can put your sign on this lawn. And that's, that's, that's what we give to to the to the candidates. That way there's no, not necessarily a lot of interpretation of our law of our bylaw. We can then quantify those in the bylaw by saying you can put your signage here on this intersection and whatnot there. And it has to be a certain amount of height from the ground, et cetera. All that stuff can be there. But to make it absolutely simple and to echo what councillor Randawa said, give them a map with a little highlighted marker. That's where you can put your sign. And the only reason why I say this is because we heard during the election that people were sick of all the bloody signs. Sorry, all the signs, sorry, everywhere. Sorry, I'm sick. So my filter is a little off. We're we're sick of seeing all the signs all over our community in every possible corner. So I think that that bringing these these signage bylaws to only specific areas will help decrease the clutter and 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 as Kent put out, promote safety. Yeah. Oh, by the way, may I add Shannon? At the end of West Chestermere Drive, one of your signs is still up. So you might want to go pick that one up. Just noticed it the other day.
That's what I feel like. Okay, everyone on this, I feel like we have circled this issue. I feel like administration had said that they're going to be coming back with a very different looking bylaw. So I would, I would like to just accept for information and have them come back with a different thing. But Deputy Mayor.
I'm sorry, your worship, but could I, could I comment on two things that are maybe a slightly different direction? One of them is kind of in line with that, but I was just wondering if there's anything currently in the bylaw that says yea or nay for signs on beaches, John Peak Park, dog parks, that kind of stuff. Because currently I think we could put a one meter by one meter sign at John Peak Park, right? So that would just be another thing to consider. And then the other thing I was wondering about was triggering bylaw for this. I know my own experience putting up signs in two different campaigns is very frustrating to follow the rules and see other people not following the rules. And wondering if bylaw would, if there's something in here that could say bylaw would be proactively going around instead of our typical system, which is waiting for a complaint and not penalizing the people who are following the rules.
I would, I would suggest on that, sorry, just before that, I would suggest on that, we've seen that. I since we've taken office, bylaw has been very proactive as well as city ops have been very proactive in taking down signage that has been posted in terms of like when businesses are putting up signs that are not permitted. Bylaw and our city ops have both been very proactive over the last number of months. And I would suggest that that would continue. And yeah, so I'm, I think we've seen that demonstrated over the last few months and I don't see that changing.
I, your worship, I think that depends on the humans. So if if there was a way to put it into the bylaw, I would prefer to see that just because people change administrations change, but I understand that's a tricky one to put into policy.
Yep.
Through the chair, administration will look into that for sure and we'll bring something back.
Okay. With that, are we good to accept for information? Good, good. Can I have the motion on the screen, please, to accept for information? Can I have a councillor make the following motion, please? Deputy Mayor Sambo.
Thank you, your worship. I move that the Governance and Priorities Committee.
Going back to administration.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, just a word from administration here. That was the original referral motion, but what we heard was just to accept for information. There's a quite a bit of work that we'll probably have to go into this. We'll endeavor to bring it back in April, but we'll put up the information to accept for information. And administration will bring it back at its earliest possible meeting to council.
Mr. Edney.
Thinking if I can just add to that story, why that's a tough date is with the new process we have internally for reviewing all of this before it comes to council, we even today wouldn't meet that deadline. So if we can just have some flexibility to get it back to you as soon as we can, following our revamped internal process, that would be appreciated. So we'll shoot for that date, but it may be the first one in May if we need to.
Okay. So can we put, can we accept for information first? Then could the motion be by the end of May? Going back to a regular meeting of council by the end of May 2025? Okay. So we'll make two motions. So can we do this one first, please? Deputy Mayor.
Certainly. I move that the Governance and Priorities Committee accept the election signage bylaw for information.
Comments, questions? Call for the vote. Councillor Schindler.
In favor.
Thank you. That's carried unanimously. And then we'll have the second motion. Do a quick review here. Do a quick review here. Uh, direct administration, Governance and Priorities Committee, direct administration. To bring back, there we go. Uh, can I have a counselor make the following motion, please? Deputy, uh, sorry, Counselor Rundawa.
Thank you, your worship. I move that the Governance and Priority Committee direct administration to bring back the election signage bylaw. To the regular meeting of council by the end of May twenty twenty five.
Comments, questions? Administration, we're comfortable with that timeline? Great. Uh, call for the vote. Counselor Schindler?
In favor?
Thank you. And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. We'll now take our lunch break and we will come back at one o'clock. Thanks, everybody.
Good afternoon, everyone. We're coming back now from our lunch break and moving on to item 7.1, which is our Dawson Harbor Heights update being presented by Ms. Amritaj, who is our interim director of community growth and infrastructure.
Good afternoon. My presentation is through the mayor to all of council today. I would like to acknowledge, to start my presentation, since there's no one else here other than those online, that I'm getting better at doing that properly. I'm trying really hard. The purpose of this report is very simple. On February 4th, council passed a motion directing administration to work with the developer and the builder of the apartments and bring back solutions. We are engaged in those conversations, and essentially, we need a little bit more time. So, we are proposing to come back on May 6th, hopefully. So, we're having positive dialogue with the developer.
Great, thank you. I think it would be great if we're able to find some sort of a resolution to this in one way, going into summer season, right, as people are gonna wanna start to use their patios in their backyards and things like that. So, if it is possible to have that positive, sounds like a positive conversation, moving forward with some sort of a outcome for for that May 6th, I think is our next gap, I do think that that would be very positive. Council, does anybody else have any questions with regards to this matter? Okay, thank you. With that then, I'll call for a motion to, except for information, can I have a council grant?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that the governance and priority committee accept the Dawson Harbor Heights update report for information.
Comments, questions? Call for the vote. And Counsel Schindler?
Aye.
Thank you. And that's carried unanimously, thank you. Moving now to some of our standing items, school sites. While this has been announced on a few different platforms, just turning to Ms. Amritaj with the exciting news, this is kind of our first council meeting where we, sorry, our first gap meeting for us to be able to talk about the school sites update, just with regards to the information we learned with regards to our high school.
My comments are through the mayor to all of council. I actually would ask that the mayor give this update, as you have been so critical in getting this. It's just so wonderful.
Well, thank you. So, yeah, so just an update on our school sites is that we have been successful in, we have construction funding for our new K-9 public high school site that will be going over in the Dawson area. And then recently, we learned that we now have planning funding coming for our new high school site, and that planning funding has been approved by the province. And so, we have some letters of thank you that we are preparing as a municipality to send out to the ministers involved in this, just to say thank you for that, as well as we have some press releases that we will be releasing with regards to this as well. Also, our CAO on several occasions has indicated that our plan is to have the rest of the items that are needed for this site completed by the end of July. And what that will then look like is, under the school accelerator program, we will not need to wait, and Rocky View schools will not need to wait for a full year to reapply then for the next phase of funding, that once everything is then completed, that they could actually move for application for the next phase of funding, which could either be design or development funding. But, the exciting news is that we have not had a new school open in Chestamere since 2014. And in less than the nine months that this council has been, here, we have got construction funding for a K-9 school, and we have planning funding for a high school site. And again, timeline-wise, within nine months. No new schools in over 10 years, and this council with the work of administration in Rocky View Schools and the government of Alberta, has been able to have two school sites approved. And I think that that's items worth celebrating. And what I will also say to that is, we're not done. We continue to work. We're already having conversations about what school sites in Clearwater can look like. I know administration is already into those conversations. And so, I just want to thank everybody for their work on this and moving this forward. It's exciting for Chestamere. Ms. Amritaj?
I do have one more.
Great.
Great piece of news. As of yesterday, we have received the development permit application for the new Rocky View School K-9 school in Dawson's Landing.
Oh, great. Awesome.
That will be processed with high priority by the CGI team. So, we're good news on schools from every direction right now. And I would like to take a moment and acknowledge all the staff who have put their hearts and souls into getting these schools, from Kent to Joe to Kate, who has been our champion of all the schools. This, it's just great news.
That's awesome. Great.
And of course, council. Thank you for also championing schools.
Yeah, absolutely. I've said it on my social media platforms, it's incredible what can be accomplished when all the interested parties are working collaboratively to move a project forward. It's incredible what we can see accomplished. So, it's great news. With that, I have a motion to accept the school sites information for information, school site update for information. Can I have a council make the following motion, please? Counsel Randala?
Thank you, your worship. I move that the government's and priority committee is accept the school site update for information.
Comments, questions from council? Call for the vote. Counsel Schindler?
Aye, in favor.
Thank you. And that's carried unanimously. Onto the recreation update. First of all, going to our recreation chair, Counsel Grant, any updates from your perspective?
Thank you, Mayor Dean. We have a few amount of updates. They are significant, though. They're big projects. First of all, we'd like to announce that the, that we will be giving a grant to CRCA for the 2025 year of $160,000, and this goes to proving that this council is investing in recreation and that is important to us, and that we feel that these things are important to a growing community. And as much as schools, this is important to us, and we want to make sure that life in Chestamere is great for everybody and that everybody has an opportunity to participate in recreation.
Sorry, Counsel Grant, just before you continue, just if I may, Counsel Grant, just a correction on wording. It is not a grant, it is funding.
Funding.
Right, because the key difference for our enough, for our community is that grants are essentially applied for, right? Whereas, this is from a different funding model that the city utilizes within our budgeting cycle.
Perfect, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. And the second one is for the Dawson Landing Recreational Committee. That committee has done a lot of hard work in identifying the amenities that are important to this community. That committee felt that they needed to understand the funding and the capital expenditure that those amenities would be borne by the community members. So, we wanna make sure that we're being responsible with tax dollars. So, a vote should be coming shortly on which motion will be presented to council for their recommendation to move forward. I hope to have that done within the next month or so. And my last update would be, we as the recreational committee are gonna be meeting shortly to talk about summer unorganized recreation, and that has to do with outside recreation in parks that people can do on their own without an official organization setting it up. So, we are looking at ideas that can be implemented, that will attract people to our parks, to attract families to our parks, so that they can recreate as. to attract families to our parks, so that they can recreate as it brings value to life in Chestamere. So if anyone has any ideas about what they would like to see for summer unorganized recreation, whether it's, I don't know, example, lawn bowling might be a bad example, but I would love to hear it. And I know administration would probably love to hear it as well. So if anybody has any great ideas, I'd love to give this opportunity to email into the city and myself and let us know. And I'd like to bring those forward and, and make Chestamere a better place for recreation.
Great, thank you. See you almost ready.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add a quick comment to Counselor Grant's point about the funding for the rec, or for the CRCA. Just for a clarification point from a process perspective, that was allocated in the interim operating budget back in December. Just, it wasn't something that was decided at council without a proper motion, etc. So just wanted to mention, it was already in the budget. Just making clear, as Counselor Grant mentioned, that it is going to the the CRCA.
That's a great clarification, actually. Thank you. See you. Deputy Mayor Sanbo and Counselor Ryan, who also sit on our recreation committees, is there anything that you would like to add to that? Counselor Ryan's a no. Deputy Mayor is a no. Awesome. Then can I have a motion to accept for information, please? Can I have a counselor make the following, Counselor, well, you presented, so I'm not sure you should motion to accept your own information. Counselor Ryan?
Remove that governance and priorities committee accept recreation update for information.
Great, thank you. Comments, questions? Call for the vote.
In favor?
Thank you. And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. Then on to our committee updates. So I will kick things off here with Mayor Task Force for Not-for-Profit. We met a couple of weeks ago. And the task force is working on some letter writing campaigns to, to different levels of government, just with regards to funding within our community. One of the things that we're talking about is the diversity of needs that we're seeing in our community. And and one of the things about not-for-profit groups is they say yes to everything, because it's really hard to say no when you have the human that's sitting in front of you. And one of the things that's happening is, we have a number of groups that are finding that they're starting to work outside of their scope. But again, it's just tough for them to say no when that human's sitting in front of them. So there's a bit of a letter writing campaign that's working on within this task force that when that gets finalized, looking forward to bring back to council, as well as just finding other ways that we could hopefully have some other funders involved. And then the other piece that's being worked on is a bit of a not-for-profit resource, similar to what we see that the Older Adults Coalition has put out with regards to the Older Adults Resource Book. We'd like to see a resource similar to that with our not-for-profits. Some sort of a easy to follow, easy to go to, here's what the not-for-profit is, here's what they do, here's the services you can access, and making that more accessible, whether through online formats or even a paper copy. So that is a big project right now that's being undertaken by that particular task force. And then there's just the ongoing meetings that are happening at the inter municipal levels. We have one with Calgary coming up this week, and then we have another one with Rocky View again here in the next couple of weeks as well, and looking forward to continuing those conversations. Counselor Randala, is there anything that you'd like to share from any committees that you're sitting on currently? Okay, thank you. Counsel Grant?
I suppose I should probably provide an update on the Chestamere Economic Development Committee as Counselor Wazniewski and I are headed to Caninasus next week with our manager of, sorry, our manager of economic development. So this conference will be to meet with lots of professionals, builders, basically anybody involved in economic, economical development is there. And we will be there representing Chestamere to try and help bring more businesses and more economic growth to Chestamere, as it is extremely important for our bottom line. In addition to that, I will move on to the seniors advisory committee for an update. We met, I believe it was two weeks ago now, and we have been focusing on, as I mentioned last time, there were four topics that we were focusing on to give recommendations back to council. The most recent one that we talked about was transportation. We are still talking about that. There's lots of good information that's coming. There's lots of options that are organically coming out of the community, even to that committee in different ways. So we are, we are actively trying to focus on how to improve the connectivity in our community and how we can get, you know, our seniors and our, in our youth around our community in a more efficient way. So we don't have a motion or anything yet, but that is, that will be coming, and it is something we are working on.
Great, thank you. And Counsel Grant, I think all of us would be hopeful that when you come back from that, that council could hear a report on some of the connections that were made and things like that, and bring that probably back to our gap meeting on May 6th, I think would be good. I think one of the practices that I think would be good, and we started to follow this, is that whenever any of us go away to a conference and things like that, I think it would be good for us to offer a report back to council and to the public as to what we got out of that conference, how it was valuable. And then even if it wasn't, just to say, hey, we tried this and that didn't work, and we're not going to do that again. But I don't suspect that that's going to happen. But I think it would be good as a practice for us as council to, when we go away to these conferences and things like that, to bring back a report for public. Counselor Narayan?
Thank you, your worship, to you two members of council. With respect to the police communications committee, I understand that there will be before, coming before council in the next couple of weeks to do a presentation, give a bit of an update as to how the change in the structure or TOR for the committee is going to impact the committee. And also, there will be, from what I understand, a small ask of council in order to span on some of the expenses that we are contemplating in order to change the branding and the name of the committee on some of our merchandise. Apart from that, at last gap meeting, I did have a list of questions that are presented to the CEO, which he answered. And I think, from what I understand, that was supposed to come back, whether in a form of minutes or something, to this gap meeting with the responses to those questions. So if I can get an update as to when we should be expecting that.
Through the chair to Counselor Ryan, my sincere apologies. Yes, that was a request with the written responses. It will be coming back to a later meeting for you. Not ready for today. So my sincere apologies. That was oversight on my part.
Could we have that for the council meeting next Tuesday, and add that to the agenda? It could just be a consent agenda item?
Yeah, I think we can do that.
If possible? Just because, yeah.
Yep.
So we would need a motion for that, then? Because it's an action item. So the action item then would be unfulfilled right now, because the action item was to bring to this one.
Yeah. I don't think we need a motion. Was it, it wasn't a motion the first time. It was a, something I said I would do, wasn't it?
No, it's a motion. It's on the action list.
Okay, let's get a motion then. If, might as well, if it's on the, if it's on.
I'm just confirming, I'm confirming that right now. Sorry, my, it's sideways on my screen. I apologize. Either way, then, I think that we should have this as a motion at this time. So Counselor Ryan, would you like to have a motion to add, to bring back the written responses to the questions to the? There it is. Counselor Ryan?
Let's remove that governance and priorities committee direct administration to come back to the April 8th, 2025 regular meeting of council with an update regarding the police communications committee questions.
Great, thank you. Comments, questions? Call for the vote. Thank you, Counsel Schindler. Thanks for hanging in with us, buddy. Okay. Also, Counselor Ryan, I just had a thought, and I would offer this, and I will work on getting you an answer for this. I wonder to, given the fact that we already had the structure in place, and there needed to be a very small change in the TOR, but I wonder if it has to be named that. So I think what I could do in the, in the meantime, in between, before that presentation comes, reach out to Minister Ellis and see that if we could leave the name the same, that way, none of the branding for anything that we have needs to change. So if, if you're okay with that, I will reach out to the minister and find out if we can just leave, keep, change the TOR accordingly, but keep the name the same, so we don't have to change any of our internal branding or anything like that. Would you be open to that?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So yeah, I will reach out and see if we can get an answer to that. So that, you, Counselor Ryan, Deputy Mayor Sanbo?
Thank you, your worship. I do have one update today. One of the boards that I've been appointed to is Community Futures Wild Rose. This is a nonprofit that's made up of multiple municipalities, including Chestamere and east and north of us. And the purpose of the Community Futures Wild Rose is to build, to do job creation in the region and build the economy. So they have put out some information recent, recently that I thought was interesting for this most recently completed year. Loans to Chestamere from Community Futures Wild Rose was at over $100,000, which was at about 7% of the total loans put out in this region. So just reminding the community that this is a resource available to businesses and entrepreneurs. So Community Futures Wild Rose typically gives loans to businesses who have been denied by the banks for some reason, but still have a strong plan for their business and could receive some financing. If anyone has any questions, they can reach out to Community Futures or send me a note. It's a great resource in our region.
Great, thank you. Deputy Mayor, if you don't mind if I put you on the spot, and if you can't, that's okay. I can speak to it as well. I have spoken very highly of MCMC and the value that that has brought. And going back to the earlier point that with Counselor Grant and Counselor Wazniewski attending a conference, yourself and my, yourself and CAO Edney, myself had the opportunity to go up to Edmonton for MCMC, essentially post-budget event. And it was kind of your first, I guess, interaction, if you will, with an MCMC event. I was just wondering if you had any reflections from that. Again, I've spoken highly of MCMC. I was just wondering if I, if I can, if I can put you on the spot a little bit about your reflections from attending that event.
Certainly, your worship. I found it to be a very good event. I thought it was very much worth our time from talking to other attendees. I think they found that to be the case as well. We had a great turnout of ministers and MLAs attending as well. And I think it's a really good opportunity for Chestamere every single time we have an opportunity to show up and show up strong to do that. And I think we did do that. We had some really important conversations. I think it's something that Chestamere should be participating in in the future and learning from and advocating at, most definitely.
Great, thank you. Yeah, absolutely. We had some great connections, and the timing was really good, even with regards to us being able to speak to even the Beacon Project that we have coming up and having the opportunity, and the timeliness of that was excellent. Counsel Schindler, I'm not sure if you're up to it, but I would be remiss if I didn't at least offer you the opportunity if there's anything you want to share from your perspective.
I've got two committee updates. The, the emergency planning committee met on March 13th. There's a lot of change happening at that, at that committee. The, the province has switched, or has asked to be, asked the committee to switch from EGC model to an ICP model. I could spend time explaining that, but it's, it's essentially, the protocols for managing emergencies are, are being revamped. And with that, there's a whole bunch of training that needs to happen. We also need to bring some information back to councils to have them adopt these new, these new changes. But that is going to wait until after the next election. Because there's still a bunch of legwork that needs to happen, there's not going to be enough time to have that completed and have it back to councils for approval that are in this, in this emergency management committee. So then we had to, or rescheduled, or not rescheduled, rescheduled our next meeting for September 11th. Following that, on the same day, we had Lake and Watershed Committee meeting. And the, we did basically a full terms of reference review. We talked about the lake safety plans from 2018, and we're hoping to update those lake safety plans. We talked about stormwater and the CSMI rejoining. And a whole bunch of talk about lake bed cleanup and just some of our future initiatives. And I think what we're going to do is look back in time and see what was being done and find a way to build on that, find out what was done, what wasn't finished, and maybe we can finish what was, what was started. So I think that both committees are doing a heck of a lot of legwork, a whole lot of weightlifting. And I'm really happy with how they're both going. And I think that's all I have for today.
Great, thank you. With that then, I believe we've come to the end of our committee updates. Can I have a motion to accept the committee updates for information, please? Can I have a counselor make the following, Counsel Grant?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that the governance priority committee accept the committee updates for information.
Great, thank you. Comments, questions from council? Call for the vote. Counsel Schindler?
In favor?
Thank you. And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. I believe now completed our agenda, so can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please? Counsel Randala?
Thank you, your worship. I move that the government's and priority committee adjourn the meeting at 1:34 PM.
Great, thank you. Call for the vote. Counsel Schindler?
In favor?
Thank you. Thanks for hanging out with us there, Counsel Schindler. Go get better.
I do my best. I can't miss a meeting. Oh, good Lord. I do my best. I can't miss a meeting. Oh, good Lord.